Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in ten minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes. Okay, your sixty-second warning if everybody wants to find a place to sit. Okay, we will call the August first, 2023 Volusia County Council Meeting to order at nine AM. Let me just give you an idea of how we will start and proceed. We always open up with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is open to any faith group in Volusia County. If you're interested in taking part of that, please just send an email to K Green, the letter K, green@volusia.org. Krista Green over here, and she will get you all set up to do that. And you're welcome, welcome to participate. And actually, we appreciate it that you take the time to come. This morning, we have Dr. Louis Gates of the Southern Casadega Spiritualist Camp Meeting Association. If you would stand for the invocation and then just remain standing for the pledge. Appreciate it.
We have an attitude of prayer. Infinite Spirit, we thank you today to guide, protect us, and encourage us on our journey. That you encourage the people here, the energy to filter through Volusia County, to encourage the ones who need help, encouragement, and love, that we help and encourage the community at large. In this, we ask God to protect us and guide us as we make our journey each and every week to bring forth the love and compassion that we have for each other here in Volusia County. And as we say, amen. You are the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We always start our meeting after the invocation and the pledge with the roll call. I'll give Karissa just a second, and then I'll go to public participation. And when I call your name, just come down here to the front. And please make sure the microphones are close to your mouth because we want to hear in the entire chambers what you say. We appreciate you taking your time to come and speak to your council. You'll have three minutes. In this session, you can speak about anything that you would like.
Mr. Johansson.
Thank you.
Mr. Kent.
Here.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Here.
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Santiago.
Here.
Mr. Dempsey. Mr. Brower.
Here. So there's five of seven. We still have a forum, and we can proceed with the day. Public participation will start just in the order that they were given to me. First up is Alec Redner.
Good morning. Xi Jinping's lover President Herzog of Israel is a part of the Labor Zionist Party of Israel, or what I like to call Trotskyite Communist Democratic Socialists. These Israeli Labor Zionists affiliate with European Socialists, who in turn with the Chinese Communist Party's Belt and Road Initiative. Construction in Israel for the last twenty years has been helped by Chinese laborers under the Chinese Communist Party's Belt and Road Initiative, and has been funded by the Bank of China through the Bank of Israel in exchange for US weapons and US spy technology that was given to Israel through US foreign aid and other CIA means. President Herzog of Israel likes to talk about Holocaust remembrance. Yet he genocided his own Jewish people in Israel with one of the highest per capita death rates in the world with the deadly Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine. Obama's lover, black magic witch, ecofeminist, Director of National Intelligence Avril Haines is a former deputy CIA director that was talking to the China's Center for Disease Control in October of 2019 at Bill Gates Pandemic 201, before the SARS-CoV-2 bioweapon was released from the Wuhan lab, all thanks to malicious intent of the CIA Jason Group and the Pentagon selling it to the Chinese Communist Party. The CIA's first dry run with SARS-CoV-2 bioweapon was in 2003, and it was released in China thanks to the UNC Chapel Hill Fort Dietrich virologist Ralph Baric, working with CIA asset Dr. Fauci to make SARS-CoV-1 more transmissible and deadlier, finally ending up with SARS-CoV-2. Project BioShield has been a depopulation success for the Illuminati bloodline New World Order sadly. Don't forget that the wacko witch, Director of National Intelligence Avril Haines, was a part of CIA's Palantir Artificial Intelligence censorship of vital COVID-19 treatment information. And if anybody deserves to be charged with treason and genocide of a global population, it would be the Director of National Intelligence Avril Haines. She must be impeached. Congress should sunset Section 702 of FISA because of the proven massive warrantless surveillance of millions of US citizens' electronic communications. Congress should abolish the USA Freedom Act that allows no-knock warrants, sneak-and-peek warrants, which under the old British Crown is general warrants and lack probable cause under the Fourth Amendment. There are millions of wrongful convictions in the United States because of corrupt law enforcement agents and corrupt prosecutors like US Attorney Matthew Alson. That is why I support writs of mandamus that allow a criminal defendant to see the personnel file of a dirty cop or dirty federal agent. I also support writs of a dicted curlate that allow a federal court to look at wrongful state convictions after the criminal pillant has exhausted all state remedies. The equitable remedy that can overturn past federal convictions is a writ of Coram Nobis that allows a federal appeal with a gross miscarriage of justice. I still have a recall petition for Sheriff Shitwood for ignoring the COVID-19 vaccine and remdesivir deaths in the hospitals. I think he's a terrible sheriff and a scumbag.
Thank you, your time is up. Melissa Lammers. Sir, please, Chairman, come to order.
I respectfully request that you have him removed from the chambers. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request that you have him removed from the chambers. Chairman, I respectfully request that you have this individual removed from our chambers.
And I've called for the deputy, and he's coming. Melissa, I'm sorry for the interruption.
I'm sorry too. Good morning, council members, manager Reckonwald. I'm Melissa Lammers, Ormond by the Sea, District Four. I'm speaking on behalf of four organizations this morning. The Echo Volusia Forever Alliance and all three Audubon chapters in Volusia County, Halifax River, Southeast Volusia, and West Volusia Audubon chapters. I'll address several Volusia Forever items, and I beg your indulgence that I'm not addressing them individually. I'm on a health watch. The Florida Wildlife Corridor and Volusia Forever are inextricably linked and have been since 2001. In our county, the crown jewel is the Volusia Conservation Corridor. Back in 2001, a forward-looking Volusia County Council and the St. John's River Water Management District proposed the 79,000-acre Volusia Conservation Corridor as a Florida Forever project. It was approved by the ARC and placed on the Florida Forever land buying list. Seventy-seven percent of the project has been acquired, but 17,000 acres remain if a willing seller can be found, if willing sellers can be found. All of the Volusia Conservation Corridor is within the Environmental Greenways Network Priority One and Priority Two lands, which also define the Florida Wildlife Corridor. There are lands adjacent to the Volusia Conservation Corridor that should be considered as additions to make them a priority for acquisition from willing sellers. We support the potential expansion of the Volusia Conservation Corridor as laid out in the work plan and goals by the Volusia Forever Advisory Committee and as has been done in the past. Florida Forever was fully funded this year, so there's money available for matching. We also respectfully urge you to approve the Lake to Lagoon Regional Conservation Partnership Program with the Alachua Conservation Trust. If implemented, the program will bring additional matching dollars to Volusia Forever to protect important agricultural land and habitat connectivity in our county. It will also help our resiliency goals by mitigating the historic flooding that we've recently experienced. Please vote in favor of this valuable program that stretches our tax dollars. Lastly, we're very pleased that after decades and the efforts of organizations like Audubon, the Florida Wildlife Corridor was finally recognized by the legislature in 2021 as a geographic area. Local governments are encouraged to preserve land within it. The most important thing Volusia County can do to protect the Florida Wildlife Corridor, in addition to Volusia Forever, which provides match funding to buy lands within it in our county, is to advocate for the full funding of Florida Forever and the Rural and Family Lands Protection Program as part of our legislative lobbying efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Richardson. I'm sorry, Paul, not yet. John Nicholson. It was just a test.
John Nicholson, beat side? Either or, it wouldn't have mattered. A couple of things, two things on your agenda. One, P, the trails. I didn't get to look at the backups. I wish you would have put it up on the screen. We keep hearing from one of the chambers about the money being spent on the west side. I mean, it's been on the east side, and it never gets spent on the west side. After forty years here, I've noticed that most of the money is spent on the east, on the west side. We get very little on the east. If you look at your trails, Pat North, he said, well, you have a trail. It's the beach. Well, it can't be a trail and a roadway because the beach is considered a roadway, like the boardwalk is a roadway. So the funding, I would like to see that some money of these trails is spent on the east side as well. Secondly, fair share amendment. I was at a meeting, and the people who live along LPGA are wondering, they're putting all this money from the new development into the fair share. Where is it going to be spent? Where's the county going to spend it? I spoke and said, well, there's a zone in the northeast, and I was told I shouldn't have said that, but it is, you do have one. But their request is that that fair share not be spent in North Ormond or South Daytona, but what's worth the most on LPGA Boulevard? And they're told that LPGA can't be expanded because we don't have the funds? Well, if the funds are being spent elsewhere, we'll never get the funds. So I told them to call Matt and to call Troy to demand that they concentrate that funding on the LPGA corridor where it's needed the most. Third, with regard to the Echo of Florida Wildlife Conservation, I agree with that totally, but I also agree with agricultural. That is as much a wildlife corridor as anything else because the wildlife can freely walk through most of our agricultural land. And they eat a little bit on the way, but they don't eat enough to kill us. So I'm asking that any agricultural land be set aside as part of the wildlife corridor so that we don't end up with this huge wildlife corridor and no food. So I'm asking that that be included. And lastly, driving here, I passed the back of the mall on ISB. They have a new apartment complex there, and they left the pine trees a long time. I'm asking that we consider that, because we have all this vacant land, when they build huge developments, to leave a corridor around the outside. It's natural, no fertilizer, doesn't cost them anything, and we get to keep the natural habitat. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Richardson.
Morning, Council. My name is Paul Richardson of Belen. Last month, Volusia County Sheriff's deputies raided Holly Hill House at the site of a fentanyl and crack cocaine dealing, as well as one overdose death. Members of the East Volusia Narcotics Task Force, Volusia Bureau of Investigation, and VSO SWA executed a search warrant and arrested everyone inside. Say what you want about Sheriff Mike Shitwood personally, but the Volusia Sheriff's deputies are often forgotten about and don't get the praise that they deserve. They're doing the people of Volusia County proud. Not to be outdone, the Daytona Beach Police Department just a few days ago dismantled the narcotics operations in that city. Many props to Chief Yon and working proactively to crack down on the narcotic violence in our greater community. This brings me to an important point. We live in a society. We live in a society, and in this society, we have rules, behavior, and laws. Some people think that they are above the law. They really think that lawlessness is acceptable in society. We see this lawlessness in places like San Francisco, Chicago, Oakland, and New York City. However, that sort of behavior isn't going to fly in Volusia County. That's the point Try That in a Small Town by Jason Aldine was trying to make. It's not just rioting and theft, but drugs as well. The good people of Volusia County can live free and participate in a free market because we have the confidence that if the criminal thugs commit harm, theft, or fraud, we have the backup from the sheriff deputies and the many different police departments across the county to take corrective action, and the Florida courts to follow due process to punish the guilty. I'm all for postponement fitting the crime, but we can't let death or violence go at any level. Some corrective action must take place. I hope that you join me in giving thanks to Volusia County Sheriff's deputies and police officers. We know that with them on our side, you really don't want to try that in our small town. God bless Volusia County and God bless America.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Chaffey, New Smyrna Beach. I'm here to ask you to support the conservation items on the agenda today: the Volusia Forever Committee Goals, the $24 million Regional Conservation Grant through the Alachua Conservation Trust, and research and ground truthing for expanding the Volusia Conservation Corridor. These items will collectively benefit us all. The more intact vegetation we have, the more resilient our county is to flooding, drought, air and water pollution, noise pollution, and local wildlife die-off. Our county is unique in its natural lush green beauty, and we need to keep it that way and add to what we already have to make it a place where people want to continue to live and to visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Donna Craig. I live in Ormond by the Sea. Thank you for this opportunity to come speak in this beautifully air-conditioned chamber because it's hot out there. I don't need to tell you that, you already know that. It's really hot. They say there's global warming going on and that we've done a lot of things that have made it worse. I can believe that. Some people don't believe that. Can you believe that? One of the things that's added to our global warming issue is lack of trees. I mean, have you driven Williamson Boulevard recently? Wow. It used to be a pretty drive. Now, we keep clearcutting acreage every time some developer comes along and buys up a big piece of land, and from what I understand, only then does the developer go about trying to get all the permits for whatever plan they have for used-to-be beautiful view villas or whatever. And when clearcutting takes place, guess what that does to the natural habitats for indigenous wildlife? You already know. It decimates those natural habitats. And now, the federal government is having to foot the bill to plant trees in a reforestation effort spearheaded by the Department of Agriculture to the tune of billions of dollars. There's a lot of our tax dollars that are sadly being spent to mitigate the damage largely done by clearcutting every time we turn around. We need to get serious about land conservation, folks. We need to protect our environment any way possible, whether it's land with trees, rivers, lakes, natural wetlands, or wildlife habitat. We need to slow down Volusia's growth, which is inevitable, to a pace that makes sense and that we can deal with. We already have a lot of people living in Volusia County, and they keep coming down. We already have a lot of people living here, and also, we get a lot of people just visiting Volusia. One of the things besides Disney and the grandparents that people come to Florida to see is natural beauty. And Volusia has beaches, forests, waterways, you name it, we got it. But we're losing it, and what we should be doing is conserving it. Trust me, people will still come to Florida. People will continue to spend their money down here on vacation. We can reap the benefit of that, but only if we conserve what we have that makes it desirable to come here. Whenever I hear about a new proposed development, I think of an old boss of mine who used to say, "Just because you can doesn't mean you should." Please think about land conservation every time you vote, every single time. Our children's lives depend on it, our grandchildren's lives depend on it. And I don't know about you, but I'm not too thrilled about going back outside after this meeting because it's hot out there. It's really hot. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council. My name is Rohita, and I'm 17. I'm in support of all land conservation items for today. This includes the Volusia Forever Committee Goals, and Volusia Forever is working hard to preserve the agricultural and natural systems in our county. They're trying to protect our water and our green spaces. Also, the $24 million Regional Grant through Partnership, which funds Volusia Forever and the Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation. They are working to connect, protect, and restore essential conservation habitat statewide. These lands are essential in flood mitigation. I appreciate the foundation coming to our county and doing a presentation on the Wildlife Corridor, and I strongly support their efforts. Please vote in favor of these conservation items. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Palipzak. You'll have to straighten out your name when you get up here. And just as the speakers come up, please tell us what part of the county that you're from, just so we know. You don't have to give your entire address.
Hi, I'm Emily Palipzak, and I live in Volusia County in Port Orange, and I'm also 17 years old, and good morning.
Good morning.
I am here in support of all land conservation items on today's agenda. This includes the Volusia Forever Committee Goals, the $24 million Regional Conservation Grant through Partnership, and the Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation. Please continue your support for the Florida Wildlife Corridor research, and I urge you to vote in favor of all the conservations. Agenda Item Q provides a great way to protect our water and green spaces. I also appreciate the presentation provided by Chair Brower for the Wildlife Corridor Foundation. With the best of interest for wetlands, wildlife, and watershed, I respectfully urge you to vote in favor of Agenda Item 8, as well as all land conservation items before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Chair. My name is Jeremy Karaginos. I'm the President of the Volusia County Firefighters Association, 3574. I apologize not meeting you guys under some better circumstances. I just wanted to say that I appreciate this council and the work that you guys are doing. I really appreciate the fact that you're willing to think outside the box and try some new things. Unlike the EMS union, I wasn't invited or asked to be here today, nor was I implanted. In fact, no one has even really reached out to me. With that being said, I'm sure you're aware of what's been going on social media and the news outlet regarding the ambulance response times. That message not only stems from my organization, but the other fire unions in this county. I didn't come prepared today with loaded questions, fancy bar graphs, or information that staff's been working on for a week. My posts were not about dragging the county through the mud, nor is it political theater. I didn't finger-point at anyone, and it surely isn't the boots-on-the-ground's fault. It's about affecting change in this county and making it the safest in the nation. As a 19-year firefighter paramedic, I truly care about our community. I've seen the changes throughout my years. I have firsthand accounts of our system is failing. I've offered solutions time and time again, but yet it's fell on deaf ears. The lack of ambulance in this county is affecting our community, and it affects our EMS response and our fire response. I represent some of the best firefighter paramedics in the state, and as firefighters, we inherently want our community to be safe, and I hope you do too.
Good morning, Chairman Brower and Councilman. My name is Dr. Wendy Anderson, and I live in Deland. I'm speaking to you as an environmental scientist and as one of the county's elected leaders who is charged with the duty of conserving Volusia County's land and water resources. I'm also speaking as a taxpayer of local and federal taxes. On today's agenda are two items that support farmers and other landowners by protecting their rights and diversifying their options for the current management and future disposal of their lands. First, your approval of the Volusia Forever Advisory Board's work plan and goals will ensure that the Advisory Board continues to operate effectively in reviewing willing sellers' proposals for the county to purchase environmentally sensitive lands. Your approval will also ensure that staff will proactively research and evaluate lands that could be added to the Volusia Conservation Corridor, which would expand the county's opportunities to secure matching funds from both the state's Florida Forever program and the allocations for the Florida Wildlife Corridor. Several previously-approved Volusia Forever properties sit in limbo as staff seek funding partners. It is best for those landowners who wish to sell their land for conservation for the county to have as many funding partners as possible. Likewise, another opportunity to expand funding partnerships will be presented to you today. The USDA NRCS grant proposal for $24 million would allow the county to establish a regional conservation program partnership with the Alachua Conservation Trust. This program would provide additional matching funds for the Volusia Forever properties, and the program would bring additional federal dollars for Volusia landowners to implement best management practices for protecting water, wildlife, and forest resources on private lands. The USDA NRCS already directs nearly $1 million a year into our county to support farms, ranches, and managed forests, but this RCPP would supplement those existing programs. We all understand the importance of protecting our wildlife habitat and water resources. We all value property rights. I have repeatedly heard each of you declare your commitments to be good stewards of county tax dollars. The good stewards include seeking opportunities to supplement those dollars with state and federal sources of revenue. I want to see as much of our federal tax dollars come back to us in this county. We already welcome federal tax dollars from FEMA, HUD, and DOT for expanded roads and airport. We would be wise to seek and accept federal and state partners for land conservation too. Our natural areas and working farms do, in fact, provide tangible value to our county. We should support those landowners who choose to protect their land by building a diverse portfolio of funding partnerships. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kenny Roberts. I've been a resident of this county for 20 years. I've been EMT in this county for 19 years, and I just wanted to make a rebuttal to what was said just a few minutes ago. You know, if you have dirty laundry that you have with a different agency, I think there's a different way to go about it than putting it on social media, because everybody wants to chime in and have their, you know, have their little say about what they think actually happens. You know, I've had problems with some of the fire personnel, but I never think about taking it to social media, because I figure there's a different way, a better way, to do it. Because when you go through and do things like that, it just alienates everybody, then nobody wants to work with anybody. It's like, as soon as you get on scene, everybody just says, "Okay, you're here now, I'm gonna leave." And I mean, if you're gonna do it that way, I think the county needs to step in and implement a social media policy, because this is ridiculous. It doesn't make sense. I mean, this is not high school. We don't have the mean girls over here, jocks over here, and the nerds in the middle. I mean, if that's the way you want to do it, it's only gonna end up bad. And I mean, we work too hard to go through and service the people in this county, or you have these little temper tantrums on social media, because that's basically what it is. And I'm like, I don't have time for it. You know, I'm on the last 11 months of my career, so it doesn't matter if I say something that hurts somebody's feelings, because I really don't, at this point, I don't care if I hurt your feelings. But for the people that's here that go to work every day, bust their tail every day to service everybody in this county, black, white, green, purple, poor, rich, it doesn't matter. We come to work, we do what we're supposed to do, and that's it. So we don't have time to go through and get in these social media beats with people that don't do our job. They wouldn't want to do our job if they had to. So I mean, at some point in time, the county's gonna have to go through and make a decision on whether they want the fire department to do everything or not. And I guarantee that if the fire department has to do everything, they're not gonna want to do our damn job, because they don't want to do it now. They say they want to do it, but when the rubber meets the road, they don't want to do our job. And thank you, that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments for this morning. There are two more? Okay. Thank you. Yes, we... In the morning, and then the last public comment period, and in the afternoon, it's open, you can speak to any issue, and then you're also permitted to speak on a specific item as it comes up. Okay. With that, we will move on to our first item, the Consent Agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to pull for comment or a vote? David Santiago.
I'd like to pull Item Q.
For discussion?
Vote.
Discussion and a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would approve the Consent Agenda Item, Absent Item Q.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Absent Item Q by Troy Kent.
Second.
And a second by Matt Reinhardt. Okay, I thought I saw another name up here, but it's, I think that took care of it. So any discussion on the rest of the Consent Agenda? If not, we will, I'll call the vote for the Items Absent Item Q. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda is passed. And Item Q.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brad, here? Just had a few questions, really. Thank you, Brad.
Yes, sir.
As I read the, I think they titled it, Work Plan and Goals.
Yes, sir.
I know there's particularly numbers 3 and 4, where it says Support Acquisition Regarding the Implementation of a Small Lot Acquisition Program, and another one that says Fee Conservation and Agricultural Easements. By us adopting this, my only worry is that I don't know what those programs are, right? And I don't want to just rubber stamp something without knowing the details. I'm sure they're well-intended, but if I vote yes on this, if I disagree with something later on, somebody's gonna say, "Well, you voted to do this." Can you elaborate on what we're actually doing here?
Absolutely. So these are established programs, so what they're proposing is not a new program. It was adopted after the Volusia Forever was reauthorized. The Small Lot Program targets nine inequated subdivisions with no infrastructure, and what we do for those is we offer the sellers the market value on the property appraiser's website, and we've done a good job over the years of essentially buying these properties as another way to conserve areas.
So it's existing programs? We're not really creating anything new? I just want to make sure. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We... Vice Chair Danny Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. Brad, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but Mr. Santiago hit on a little bit. There isn't much detail on page, I think it's 2, page 2 of 2. I see everything is bullet-pointed, but there wasn't much in-depth detail on that. I don't know if right now is the time to do it. I would personally like more time, and also, we're missing a couple of our colleagues, Mr. Johansson, who's countywide, and also, Mr. Dempsey on the west side of town, northwest, which encompasses a lot of... northwest, which encompasses a lot of the area in which this would apply. I personally, council would like to hear what the rest of my colleagues would have to say before I took and voted on it personally, because they play, I believe, a major part in decision-making and how we go forward from here.
Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. I have to agree. A lot of that has to encompass the at-large area in the west side of the county. So I would have particular interest in what they had to say about it as well. I don't think it's fair on such a big item as this to do so.
Thank you. I would just add that, you know, we talk a lot about process here, and this is, what we're asking is that we hold up the process for Volusia Forever Committee, a citizens committee that has been working on this for four months, actually got a unanimous vote on some of these items. I would ask that we, you know, we need to go with the council members that are here. There's nothing new here except for allowing this committee to do research on land conservation. So I disagree with holding this committee up. Again, we need to proceed and let them do their important work. David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Council, I move to table this item to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table this item until the next regularly scheduled meeting by David Santiago, second by?
Chair, if I may, the next scheduled council meeting where all of us are present.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
What I, you've made a motion to table, it can be put on the next meeting without, you know, something may happen with any council member's schedule. What I'd suggest is that motion, I think, is correct. If you're missing a member and you feel the same way, you can make another motion to table.
Okay.
That's just my suggestion.
Maker of the motion?
Yeah, Mike, I realize that, because we could always table it again, because typically, if someone's gonna miss, we usually notify you all unless it's something that comes up urgently. So I think we'll all be okay. We'll just leave it like that, Danny, if we can, the existing motion, it'll be fine.
Okay. Before I call for the vote, which I hope is no on this, because we need to stop kicking the can down the road and deal with these important issues. We do have one member of the public who was asked to speak on this item, Suzanne Shiber.
Good morning, council. With all due respect, I wish all of you would learn about the 22 and 1/2 year program. We've had it in place for 22 and 1/2 years, and each time that items are tabled or put off, it's quite painful to the people who are working on the program. So I would just ask that county staff meet with you and actually thoroughly educate you on the program. But this is the statement for the record that I made at the committee meeting, and it was unanimously voted on. In several places, there are highly impacted parcels included within the boundary that provide no value to the corridor. In other places, there are parcels with natural land cover and apparent ecological value adjacent to the corridor boundary, but outside of it, this is a function of the coarseness of the model and its intended role of providing insights about the ecological landscape and its degree of connection. It was not created to establish a final, precise boundary line for wildlife corridor value. Local knowledge and ground truthing are important in arriving at final decisions and securing corridor protections and growth management decisions. After 22 and 1/2 years, we're due to review areas outside the Conservation Corridor for environmentally sensitive land for matching funds. Exercising best practices using research, science, and ground truthing stands to serve taxpayers' interest in Volusia County since Volusia County is responsible for the strategies to meet matching funds of the Volusia Forever program. Long-term planning shows good faith efforts striving to reach our environmentally sensitive land goals. With the longevity of our program and being leaders of the pack in conservation, a vote to the committee's goals is requested. We know the public supports land conservation. This is not in question. Lastly, I want to thank Tim Telfer and Brad Burbaw for their participation on their respective committees with the Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation. The foundation is instrumental to state-level advocacy and assisting with their experience. I want to say that there were eight letters of support submitted to all of you. I'm gonna assume that you received those. If by some strange chance this is tabled, I would like the eight letters carried over as well. And again, the public does support and has supported for 22 and 1/2 years. What we do going forward, you know, was voted on by the committee and relative to today. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Lammers.
Thank you very much. Volusia County has a proud history of land conservation going back to 1986 to the Endangered Lands Program. The first Volusia Forever program was voted upon overwhelmingly by residents of Volusia County voters in the year 2000 for 20 years. I spoke earlier about the Volusia Conservation Corridor. In 2020, 76% almost of Volusia County voters voted for the reauthorization of Volusia Forever. It was a known product. The first Volusia Forever improved upon the 1986 plan. The second Volusia Forever has improved upon the first one. There is no enormous change in the work plan. The Citizens Advisory Committee is appointed by you, by the council, to do their job, which they have done diligently. They operate in the sunshine. You have the opportunity to review properties, and at this time, we have a historic moment when there's funding available and our tax dollars should be utilized efficiently. We should strike while the iron is hot, gentlemen. That is what I'm saying. There's nothing mystical about this. I'm sure Dr. Burbaw can explain it. I am happy to meet with any of you as this citizens committee who ran the campaign for reauthorization, and I really do hope that you will approve the work plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Danny Robbins.
Thanks, Chair, and for the public and for council, I just want to be clear here. We're not disagreeing with conservation, and there's a little bit of a picture painted that we're not doing any of this. And as Ms. Lammers and some of the members of the public had stated, I want to be clear, we have set the tone almost in the state and other counties, maybe even nationally, if you look into it, with the programs that we have in place. We have over 77% of the property that's been identified within the Volusia Conservation Corridor already in protection. We have over 55% of the area of the Wildlife Corridor already in protection permanently. So to paint a picture or portray that we are not doing anything, combined with the self-taxing initiative that the voters voted back in for another 20 years, is fairly untrue to say that we do not do anything and that the world is gonna end if we don't do this. I believe it's clear, it's not kicking the can down the road. This is a big issue, and we'd like a little bit more time, or I'd like a little bit more time, to hear what the colleagues, my other colleagues that are absent have to say. So, thank you, and I just wanted to get that out there, as well as, we already have an additional 200,000 acres still available to purchase in Volusia County, and we have funds and reserves within these mandated programs, and there are still willing sellers. So a little bit more time, I believe, in my opinion, is not going to hurt anything. Thank you.
Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman, and I publicly want to thank our Volusia Forever Advisory Committee for the hard work that they put in, day in and day out, to seriously tackle issues in our community at large where we can get more land, that we can keep forever and keep it in its natural vegetative state. I thank you for that work that you're doing. As far as if we're gonna vote on it today or not, I kind of go two ways on that. So we have a quorum. Legally, we can vote on everything on our agenda. It's the rules that make up this elected body and many elected bodies, so we can do that today. At the same time, I do agree that this is a huge issue, and I had no idea that there would be five of us here today until I walked in this morning, and we're missing two of our colleagues. So, Dr. Burbaw, I do have a question for you. If we were to put this on hold for two weeks, is there any funding that we're going to miss out on? Is there anything that is going to negatively impact the work that we're looking at today by saying, let's wait until we have a full dais up here?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my two colleagues that last spoke kind of summarized what I was gonna say in their own words, but I wanted, for the audience and some that come up and spoke today, and the work, like you said, that the committee's done, I think that shows the importance of the program, right? While we have a quorum, as a council member said, I think because of the importance of the program, there are gonna be times where we don't have everybody here that we feel that it's such of importance that we want to have the entire body here to have a good discussion and ideas to flourish. So it has nothing to do with the program is good or bad, it has to do with making sure it gets its full attention in a public council. So that's the reason for the motion, and I look forward to the vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I would, I'll just add before I call for the vote that we've had a lot of public attention on this. We've got letters from five area cities, and the director, chairman, director of the Indian River Lagoon Council who sees this as very important. This is a matter of process. We talk about process a lot here, especially when a developer goes through the process that's needed to change a zoning, and I hear it said all the time that we've got to allow the process to continue and not hold it up. This is a process for a committee of volunteers that have worked hard and don't deserve to have their work set back, even for two weeks. We don't know what will happen then. This is an important issue. This gives them tools that they need right now to preserve land in a willing seller program that has money available now. So I would urge the council to vote for this committee and the work plan that they have put forward instead of tabling their work. That said, Melissa, Melissa, sorry. Carissa, what'd you call the role? And this is a vote to table item Q until the next scheduled meeting in two weeks.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Santiago? Mr. Brower?
No. And the motion carries four to one. That brings us to item two, confirmation and appointment of Clint Meacham to the position of the Division Director, Emergency Management.
Counsel and Chair, good morning. My name is Michael Ryan. I am your new Community Information Director, and I'm at the podium this morning to introduce your next three items, all of which deal with the confirmation of new department and division heads. And the first of which, I will turn it over to Mr. Reckonwall to discuss the Division Director for Emergency Management.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Honorable Counsel, today, I'm pleased to bring forth Clint Meacham as our candidate for Emergency Management Director. As you know, it's a very important position here at Volusia County. We went on a nationwide search for this position, and very happy to have located someone with the experience that Mr. Meacham brings. He has a long history of leadership. Of course, he's got some big shoes to fill, although I think he and Jim are probably about the same foot size. But the nice thing is, is we're able to bring him in while we still have Jim, as Jim has stepped up to be the Emergency Services Director, so Clint will work underneath him. He has a long history. He served as firefighter, fire officer with Salt Lake County's United Fire Authority since 1996. As the Division Chief with the United Fire Authority, he served as the county's Emergency Management Director from 2013 until just last month. In his role, he has oversaw responses to a variety of high-level incidents, of course, COVID-19, that a lot of the whole country had to face, but also something I hope we never face here, 5.7 magnitude earthquake, wildfires, which unfortunately we do get here. And out there, they have some pretty big windstorms, straight-line winds, and tornadoes and those type of storms, and he has done those as well. As a member of FEMA's Urban Search and Rescue Team, Clint actually responded to the World's Trade Center attacks in 9/11, and he's also responded to Hurricanes Katrina and Rita. He also was deployed to Louisiana to oversee logistics for Hurricane Barry response in 2019, and just recently, he was brought here to Florida to respond to Hurricane Ian. Like our Mr. Judge, he's decorated in his position. The Utah Emergency Management Association named him Emergency Manager of the Year in recognition of his outstanding leadership and achievements. Clint has a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of Utah and is a certified emergency manager. So I'm very happy to present him for your confirmation.
Thank you. David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clint, welcome to Florida. Been in Salt Lake a few times, beautiful area. One thing you won't have to deal with is snow problems, right? So the plows.
I hope not, sir.
But I felt compelled to welcome you and also kind of highlight an important topic as a 31-year resident of Volusia County. We have a unique geographical divide, I guess I'll put there. So, you know, we have what a lot of people call the Palm Middle Curtain, and oftentimes it's called East and West Side. And I wanted to, I felt compelled to say publicly, because it's always been an important thing, we've made progress in this area, but I want you to keep in mind, when and if we do have our next natural disaster or that requires a countywide mobility, that you keep in mind the continued focus that we try to do to have some type of equalized services and access for everybody of Volusia County. And again, I welcome you, look forward to your service. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll welcome you as well, and I'll give you a chance to speak before this body votes on your confirmation. Go ahead.
Counsel, thank you very much for considering my position here with Volusia County. I am humbled and proud to be here standing before you today. I look very much forward to working with leadership, my coworkers within Volusia County and the various departments and divisions, to continue the work that has been done here by Mr. Judge and others before me. I have a lot to learn from my coworkers in emergency management, as well as everybody else, my coworkers within the other departments and division, and again, I look forward to working with leadership, my coworkers within the county, and the citizens of Volusia County, which I'm now proud to say I am one, and continuing this program and keeping our communities, all 15 of them, safe across the entire county, and making sure that we are ready to deal with whatever Mother Nature or mankind may have to throw at us.
Thank you. David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the appointment.
Chairman, I was gonna, I'll happily second that.
Okay, you have a motion to approve by David Santiago, second by Troy Kent. Okay, you have a motion to approve by David Santiago, second by Troy Kent. Any comments from anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You are confirmed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next confirmation, appointment of Angela Medima to the position of Division Director, Animal Services.
Okay, as Angela comes up, I'd just like to bring before you Angela Medima, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna butcher it a little bit, Medima. She is our choice for Animal Services Director. She brings with her 12 years of animal welfare experience and leadership. She's got experience in oversight of multimillion-dollar budgets. She's managed up to 80 employees. She came from us, to us, from Orange County Animal Services, where she's worked as an animal behaviorist since December of 2021. Before moving to Florida, she served several key roles in Michigan. She's worked at some large humane societies and also was an animal control officer for Kent County Animal Control. She also worked as a mounted patrol officer for Kent County Sheriff's Office, where she was trained in equine care and management. She has a master's degree in business administration from Florida Gulf Coast University and a bachelor's degree in biology from Central Michigan University. And upon her confirmation, her first day will be August 21st.
Very good. I'll welcome you as well. I'd like for you to tell us a little bit more about yourself. And I'm just going to tell you, this is a, this is a big job. And I'm really glad to hear your extensive background, even in equine services. I think it was just a couple of days ago, we rescued, the Sheriff's Department rescued four horses from Seville that were emaciated, just not taken care of. So it goes from the smallest pet to the largest animal. You have a great background. Tell us a little bit more about yourself.
So I would say my last name is pronounced Medima. Just to help everybody out there, but I understand anybody that can't pronounce it. I come down from Michigan. I've been down in Florida for about three years now. But as you said, I do have 12 years of experience in animal welfare. That's been a very extensive amount of expertise that I've grown in veterinary medicine, nonprofit animal welfare facilities, and of course, animal control services. I'm very excited to be here today for my confirmation. And I'm extremely excited that I see the large support from Animal Services already over there in the corner. So that just makes me more thrilled to be here. I'm obviously humbled for the size of the role, and I'm excited at the opportunity to serve the citizens of Volusia County as well as their animals. So I look forward to bringing all of my expertise in this leadership role.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Annie Robbins makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Matt Reinhardt. Any other questions or comments from the council? All in favor of confirming Angela Medimos, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And you are confirmed five to zero. Thank you. Item four is also a confirmation of appointment of Dr. Bradley Burball to the position of the Department Director, Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, of course, we're the recipient of a very large HUD grant that will be administered over multiple years. It's going to involve literally millions of dollars of construction and work within the county. And we, of course, after discussing it with all of you, it was important that we had a point person. So as you know, we had Donna Butler move over and take that position to run that, which is really a full-time position. The grant, if you think about it, it's the size of several of our departments. So the fit that we would do that. But that left a big hole in our community services area. So we, very fortunate that we had the talent right in-house. So Dr. Burball, of course, is one of our homegrown success stories. He's just in four years, he's kind of risen through our ranks from Extension Director to Resource Stewardship Director. And now I'm presenting him here to be considered for confirmation as a Community Services Director. We've been greatly impressed by Brad's leadership skills and dedication serving the county residents. I'm very confident he can do an outstanding job directing Community Services, which is one of our largest and busiest departments. Of course, he came on with us in November 2019. Two years later, we moved him up into the stewardship position. So as you know, he's done a nice job of shepherding forever and echo, land management, and the Extension Office in that role. Now, as he steps up, he'll oversee community assistance, library services, veteran services, of course, his Resource Stewardship Division, and our Parks, Recreation, and Culture. Brad has multiple degrees. Started off with a bachelor's degree in agricultural education and communication from the University of Florida. Went on and got his master's in government policy and administration from the University of North Florida. And because he got bored at night or whatever possessed him, but he went on to get his doctoral degree in agriculture, leadership, and community education from Virginia Tech. So Brad's already hit the ground running. And he here today, I'm very happy to present him for confirmation.
Councilman Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Reckonwall, first question to you. Who is responsible for hiring Dr. Burball? Who made that decision?
The legend grows. It's a process. He's brought to us as far as with the state as a extension agent. Donna Butler did bring him to our attention as part of that group. And ultimately, all hiring is done by myself. So technically, I hired him, but it wasn't without a team that discovered and got him here.
Well, kudos to Donna Butler and to yourself. And it's such a fantastic hire. I would recommend another lunch with Dr. Burball, Ms. Butler. I'd love to be included if possible.
Okay.
So, Dr. Burball, I was, why for the other two? I didn't know them, of course. But I have had such a fantastic opportunity to work with you on several things. But the one closest and nearest to me right now is Regrow the Loop. And when I publicly say that you made sure every i is dotted, every t is crossed, you are a professional, you are a hard worker, and you're great with the public. You know, you've got all these brains, but you're great talking to people. And, you know, that's something that doesn't always, you know, go hand in hand. And it does, it does for you. I appreciate the hard work you do every day. When George told me, you know, a little while ago about the possibility of this happening, I said, you couldn't have chosen a better person for it. You know, you are, to me, and because I had that relationship with Clay Irvin, you know, we always know, you know, we say Clay, the best in the business. And I got to tell you, I think that you're right up there. You're the best in the business with what you do. I'm super happy for you, super excited. I see others want to talk, but I'm making the motion now to appoint Dr. Burball to the position of Department Director of Community Services.
Troy Kent makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matt Reinhardt, who also wanted to say a few words.
That's Burball. When I first came on as a councilman, very agreeing to this whole thing, you were the, one of the first people that reached out when you found out my interest in what I wanted to do with that initiative with BMA Farm and taking me out to the Ag area. The patience that you displayed with me, which is pretty good. S.S. my wife. So I appreciate you, and you are the best for the job. I truly believe that. So phenomenal job for bringing it to Mr. Reckonwall's attention. Great job hiring him. Very excited to see what you're, what you're going to have in store for us. So one of the smartest men I've met. So I commend you. Great job.
You probably have a feel for how this vote's going to go.
I hope so.
Nobody else wants to talk you out of it. I'm going to call for the vote now and then say something. All in favor of Dr. Bradley Burball as the Department Director of Community Services, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And you are confirmed five to zero. Thank you for, for being willing to accept this and offer you any, any help that I can be. I'm sure the rest of the council feels the same way. I'll give you a minute to speak.
Thank you. So just want to say I have really big shoes to fill in Donna Butler, and I'm glad that she's still here, that we're going to work shoulder to shoulder to continue to serve our community. And I'm very humbled by the opportunity to lead a team of outstanding employees who've dedicated their careers to serving our community. Together with the council's leadership and support, the team will maintain our high standards of service that are the envy of other communities and continue to deliver results for our residents through our unwavering commitment to responsive and fiscally responsible services. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And that brings us to item five, Presentation of the Medical Examiner 2022 Volusia County Annual Report. Dr. James Foulter and Mark Swanson will kick it off.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, County Council, staff. Mark Swanson, Director of Public Protection. Here, item number five is the presentation of the 2022 Annual Report for the Medical Examiner's Office. And Dr. James Foulter, Chief Medical Examiner, will make that presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for having me. I appreciate the time. This is a name requirement. We've talked a lot about accreditation in names. The production of an annual report is a responsibility of my office. This is a snapshot and a statistical summary of the work we do. It has significant value in terms of law enforcement, drug overdose, outreach programs, and such. So next slide, please. Do I have a clicker? Oh, I do. How exciting. Awesome. All right. So I have the full report here. It's a public document. Anyone can request it. It is, has more detail than will be presented here. And if any member of council, the public, has particular statistics they're interested in, you guys were kind enough to buy me a new database, and I can provide that type of statistic if you need it. So just really briefly, a summary of what we do in the county. We do autopsies to determine cause and manner of death. The cause of death is why someone dies: gunshot wound to the head, metastatic breast cancer, myocardial infarction, drowning. The manner of death is either homicide, suicide, accident, undetermined, natural, or pending, one of those medical legal descriptors. That is the sole focus of my investigation, is determine cause and manner. We do not do autopsies willy-nilly. Our jurisdiction is very tightly defined in Florida statute 406. You can read that, and we'll talk about it in just a minute. But the important thing to note is we do not autopsy everyone that dies in the county. In brief, 406 requires us to investigate and potentially autopsy all unnatural deaths. That is people that die from homicide, violence, overdose, anything like that. If a physician has been administering you treatment for a potentially life-threatening disease in the last 12 months, we do not have to take that case. We do do a fair number of cremation certificate reviews. And basically, the state mandates that if someone is to be cremated or buried at sea, the body is destroyed at that point, unretrievable for investigation. We sign off on that. That makes sure no one gets away with murder. You know, the body gets cremated, and now we have no bullet path, no wounds and such. So I have good news. Things aren't great in the county, but they're a lot better than they were last year. So you can see our total deaths are down. We can see baseline, I think the pointer's here. There it is. Well, you guys, you can't, that doesn't project. You can see kind of our baseline was around 7, 7,500 cases. That was pre-COVID. Obviously, you can see the COVID spike, and the good news is that has come down considerably. Historical trends, not surprisingly, when total fatalities and deaths increase in the county, the number of cases we have jurisdiction over goes up. Once again, the good news is that is going down. When we take or accept a case, I actually certify the death. I sign the death certificate. The type of examination, which we'll talk about in just a second, is somewhat governed by law. There are certain cases I absolutely must do an autopsy on: a dead infant, a fire death, a drowning, a homicide, those we would do an autopsy on. There are some we don't have to. And that's kind of the breakdown you're going to see next. So autopsies just define those. They're complete examination of the body. They include complete examination of all organs pertinent to death. External examinations, we only assess the outside of the body. People ask, why would we do that? If someone gets involved in a serious motor vehicle collision and no charges are pending, and external examination of the body shows absolutely life-threatening injuries, we do not autopsy those cases. Medical record reviews are cases where we have medical records that potentially document trauma. The vast majority of those are hip fractures in the elderly, where imaging is done and very solid medical records are reviewed to make sure that that person did in fact die from that hip fracture. So this is the manner of death and the accepted jurisdictions. We can see that the naturals have dropped significantly post-COVID. And we do have, in the orange, the drop there is represented as well. That does represent a general decrease in overdoses, which is really the take-home point in this presentation. So that's good news. Our homicide rates, pretty consistent between 30 and 40. Volusia County is not terribly violent as far as homicides go per capita. We do have way more suicides than homicides. People are usually surprised by that. The natural deaths we evaluate are usually to rule out trauma. And then the big orange slice, which is accidents, is about half overdoses and half motor vehicle collision. So that's the breakdown there. We autopsy all homicides. We autopsy nearly all suicides. And then the other breakdown, you can see there, the medical record review for accidents in the gray bar is almost entirely hip fractures in the elderly with medical records available. Historical trends, we can see, this is cremation reviews. They've dropped post-COVID. That's almost gone back to baseline. I'm proud of this, because when you look at these numbers, you know, over 8,000 people died, but we actually reviewed the death certificate in 5,200 of those. So we're at least laying eyes on some data on most people that die in the county to make sure nothing nefarious has happened. If you ask for examples of things we caught, generally, that people that have a delayed death in the hospital, for instance, they overdose, but they survive for two or three weeks, and the doctor signs them out but doesn't attribute the overdose. That's a mistake. And we catch a lot of those mistakes. So that's why we do this. Another important one is someone that's assaulted, and they die of complications of that assault years or decades after the fact. It doesn't matter how long you live. If you're paraplegic because someone shot you in the spine and you die of a decubitus ulcer, that's on that person that shot you. They don't get a pass because you survived a certain amount of time. Hopefully, that makes sense. So we catch a fair number of those, and that's why these are so important. So this is starting the, kind of the take-home points here. The blue line is our motor vehicle collisions, and I apologize for the numbers. They're, they're lineup on the 2015. They're, they're together. I apologize for that. I noticed that yesterday. Interestingly, in 2017, we had exactly the same number. Interestingly, in 2017, we had exactly the same number of overdoses as we did motor vehicle collision fatalities. And you can see the spike in drug overdoses in the county, starting in 2019, almost exclusively related to COVID. And then we peaked in 2021. I told you last year, I believed we're dropping and we are. Um, I think this line will continue to drop based on what I'm seeing this year. So the good news is things are getting better, but we're still not at baseline for overdoses. Um, our drug overdoses by age, we can see the predominant, uh, is, uh, our average is going to be 44 years of age. 75% are white men. The balance are women and people of color. Some bad news. Uh, if you looked last year, fentanyl was involved in 71% of deaths. So we did have a 10% increase in the number of deaths related to fentanyl, unfortunately. Uh, when you look at what's mixed with the fentanyl, about one third to one half of those cases either has methamphetamine or cocaine. That, uh, triad of drugs has significant synergistic toxic effects. And I believe that's why we're seeing people die, this combination of things, and then also the fentanyl. If you're out in the public, listening right now, and you buy anything on the street, this chart to the side is what you want to look at. You're not buying Alprazolam. I haven't seen a heroin death this year. You're not buying heroin. You're not buying Oxycontin. You are buying fentanyl. Hard stop. I guarantee it. And the numbers we see and our fatalities are still sky high. You know, we've talked about this before, fatal and a naive user starts at three, maybe five nanograms per milliliter. I signed someone out in the 50s the other day. I've seen hundreds this week. So you're talking about outrageous concentrations of this drug. And that's why people are dying. There's, there's literally no hope. The Narcan has to be right there on the spot and you need a lot of it. So it's, this doesn't work. So I believe that's the last slide I have. Uh, any questions for me, council?
Yes, Councilman Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. Doctor, thank you very much for the report and thank you first off for emphasizing the fentanyl issue and the fact that Narcan, unless it's right on site, is not gonna, not gonna help you. So that being said, an address to the public is vitally important. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Real quick question. When they talk about homicides or deaths, uh, is any of that information broken down by area by chance, or is that something that we'd have to obtain from, from concept?
I can, I can provide it. I don't have it in the annual report. Kind of in preparation, I did a cursory look at that. I can provide it. I could probably break it up. I can tell you, uh, Daytona Beach City is the biggest offender there. Also for overdoses, they are the largest majority. I can tell you the one that doesn't show up is Ponce Inlet. Uh, I can tell you the western part, it's, um, DeBarry, Deland, uh, Deltona, kind of a mix. It's not a significant number compared to Daytona.
I'd be just interested in the numbers, especially in light of recent events over in the Daytona Beach area.
I will do that. Absolutely. I can provide that data. That's not a problem at all. And the overdoses and the homicides track together. Same, same locations, same areas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Vice Chair Danny Robbins. Uh, thank you, Chair. Doctor, thank you for coming in and, and, uh, doing this, uh, great presentation. It's very enlightening, uh, to the public, to the parents, to the teachers, everybody that's involved, uh, in what we do. So, uh, my question to you is, uh, in your professional opinion, um, is there anything that we can do as a council, uh, whether it's through policy or through, uh, funding to further, um, combat this or, or help, get that 80% down, whether it's more education, uh, whether it's more Narcan in specific locations or hotspots that you're seeing. I know I, I, I chair the, uh, appropriations, um, uh, committee for, uh, the, uh, when it comes to pharmaceuticalists and their drugs, but, um, and all that's been, been kind of spoken for. Is there anything else that you can think of?
Sure. Um, first off, I'd like to highlight this is a national problem. Um, so there are national things that have to happen. We can't solve this on our own. Uh, locally, I would say more Narcan's better. Like Mr. Reinhardt said, the concentrations of fentanyl we see are, are difficult to treat with that. And, uh, you can't be everywhere. Um, point, a point there is oftentimes when we go to scenes of overdoses, that person drops dead, just kind of folds over. We actually call it the fentanyl fold where they just collapse. Needle still in their arm, paraphernalia everywhere, and they're just dead. So quite literally, that law enforcement EMT officer would have to be right there. So yeah, it's, it's certainly possible. I think that would be good. I value education. Uh, I think that's valuable. I spoke at the Catalyst Program this year, uh, which is, uh, administered by Dr. Benzo. And, uh, it identifies youth that, that might need help. And, and I talked to him about the challenges of that. So I think education is critically important. I think any amount of outreach we do at a probably middle to high school level is valuable. I'm sharing up those commitments to, uh, those educators and local colleges to try to get some of that outreach going on my end. Outside of that, I think enforcement is important. I know that state law has recently changed and, uh, RJ Larizzo is interested in prosecution. Um, it used to be that I had to say that the drug that they sold them was the proximate cause of death. And now it's worded, it has to be a substantial contributing factor, basically. So the problem is if they do the reverse by and there's all these other drugs and I have A, B, C, and D, I had to be able to say just that one drug would have killed him alone. That's very difficult to do. You're kind of working backwards mentally. You can't do that. Now I just have to say it's a contributing factor. So I think we're going to see, uh, more prosecution there. So that's going to be a good thing. Outside of that, uh, outreach in the areas that I'll identify for you, I think is valuable. And I think that's, that's what we can do. If there was a, if there was a great idea, someone would have had it long before me. I, I hate to say that. It's, it's a national problem. It's everywhere. And I will tell you, there are areas in medical examiners, you go north of us, kind of the Rust Belt, they're getting, I mean, their medical examiners have incredible numbers of overdoses up there. Uh, poor areas, you know, old coal towns, West Virginia, stuff like that, uh, incredible poverty. Uh, where I'm from in Southwest Virginia, they, they, they have a real problem in the tip of Virginia, the western tip with overdose.
I'd, I'd be interested, um, if it's something that the council can agree with or just be handled at a staff level, uh, with the county manager. Is it possible we can look into putting together a good, uh, video that we can put out on our website and social media?
Absolutely.
Uh, and just some of the efforts that you do, uh, come out with Sheriff's Office and identifying some of this stuff and just, and then we can blast it out on the interweb and.
Yeah. That's absolutely a good idea. I think knowledge is power. I think people need to know. Um, I assume, I don't know how many of them are listening to me speak right now. We'll see.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Councilman Kent.
Again, thank you, Chairman. And Dr. Foulter, thanks for coming for us today and sharing this information. Information, some of it positive, some of it not so much. But again, thank you for being here. I'm really glad that Vice Chair Robbins talked about what could be done because, and then I think you hit the nail on the head when you talked about the education piece. If I recall correctly, you said the drug overdose, um, uh, the, the highest population is mid 40s, white male.
Yeah. It surprises everyone when I say that.
And you know, I'll just say, you know, I'm thinking about those, um, one of the things you mentioned, which was, you know, you think you're buying X, Y, and Z, but you're really not. You're buying fentanyl, fentanyl, fentanyl. And for me, it comes down to an education piece because I, I just get disgusted thinking about a high school kid or a middle school kid, thinking they're buying something, making a bad decision. But this is not just a, a one time bad decision. This is end of life, bad decision. And Mr. Rektinwall, if there's a way and council, if you agree, you know, I like the idea of a video and pushing that out on social media because I think that actually might be the best way to reach not only our residents, but our young residents as well. And then even the possibility of going a step further with the sheriff's department. You know, they're in many of the high schools and middle schools and those that aren't working with our partner municipalities who where they have a municipal police officer in those schools. Um, and then, and then arming them with this information to be able to share perfect time right now, beginning of the year, welcome back assembly, you know, a, a time to just let everybody know some cold hard facts. Because I think that's how we combat this is, is from an educational standpoint. And I think we could be impactful there. My next piece is a question for you, not about what you talked about, but this council, either last meeting or the meeting before that, we purchased a very expensive piece of equipment for you to, uh, an X-ray type machine.
Yes.
To speed up your process. Can you, can you just share with us how that has made you more efficient and effective at what you do?
Well, we don't have it yet. Uh, so it's coming in, uh, January. Uh, the new building will house it. We don't actually have space for it in this old building. Uh, first off, the new building's spectacular. If you haven't seen it, it is a fantastic facility. Uh, we do a, uh, educational conference every year in the shores in January. And people from all over the world attend. It's an international conference and, uh, county architect and engineer have been kind enough to share the plans with multiple countries and cities around the world. So it's a spectacular building. It's a great space and I am very, very, very grateful for the county for doing that. When this was all happening, Mr. Rektinwall told me not to worry. The county is really good at building things. And he was right. And I had to say, the contractor, architecture is perfect. The contractor called me in. He was upset. I'll just tell on him. The door opening was like five millimeters too small and he was so upset. And I'm like, if you hadn't told me, I never would notice. That's crazy. So perfectionist. It's, it's really beautiful. The new X-ray machine, the Lowdocks, will allow high capacity body imaging. A great example of that was the last, uh, multiple gunshot wound homicide case we had, which did come from, uh, I believe the Daytona area. That was arduous for us because we had multiple gunshot wounds and it took a long time to process those people. So that, this machine basically would have taken our five, six hours of work and turned it into 15 minutes of work. So that's the value there. And when you save me that time, it gives me time to do other things like go to a high school and talk to them about fentanyl. So, so yes, I'm very grateful. It's, uh, really going to be a fantastic new building. I'm very excited to share it with the public. I'm talking with the, uh, public relations people about doing, uh, tours and video, uh, video tours of it for everyone. It's, it's really going to be fantastic.
I'm, I'm pleased to hear you say that because when I took a tour, you and I mentioned, I mentioned this specifically about, you know, this is the, the people's medical examiner office. They, you know, they, they, they purchased this and they really need to see what we have. So I'm glad to hear that you're going to do that. My last comment, Chairman, is, uh, I'll make a motion to approve, um, the report given, the annual report given to us by the medical examiner.
Motion to approve the report by Troy Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matt Reinhardt. Uh, David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add, uh, I was going to bring it up at the end, but, uh, the education thing, I think is a fantastic idea. I think we should definitely run with that.
Yeah. Happy to do it.
Um, you know, I, 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 I'm typically not a big fan of like resolutions to go to like now on the national level, but, um, you, you, you hit the nail on the head. This is a national issue, right? And how do we fix it, right? And I think what we can do mostly is education here and be, be tough on that type of crime, right? With our sheriff's office.
That's pretty much what we have available for us locally.
And, but I, I think, um, the, the council should consider having staff draft a resolution to, to Congress and, and, and explain what's happening locally. Um, oftentimes I know that goes on deaf ears, but this is an important subject that we should put our position and say that this national issue needs to be addressed. It's largely been ignored. Um, and you know, you know, you hear some congressional hearings, but it's always partisan and it's unfortunate that nothing ever gets done on some of these very important issues. So I just want to throw out there, is there any support for consideration for, uh, staff to prepare a resolution to send to Congress?
Yes, there is from me.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I thought of one thing. May I speak? Um, I know from the metabolites and the contaminants that the fentanyl is 100% illicit to. So if anyone ever tries to argue that this is medical grade fentanyl that's getting out, you know, nurses are putting it in their pocketbooks or some terrible stuff like that, that's not happening. This is synthetic stuff coming out of other countries, crossing borders and coming here. It is in absolutely no way the fault of healthcare professionals that this is on the street.
Thank you. And you added, you mentioned something that I contemplating, whether I added in my comments, but now that you said it, I want to add it. I think we should also address that, the border crisis. Right? Include that in there because it's, it's a national issue that's affecting everyone. Um, it's, it's all somewhat tied together. And I just had a question for you, sir. Are, and I don't know, are we, are people, uh, smoking marijuana with fentanyl in it too? Are they putting it in there?
It is, it happens. There have been case reports. It is fairly rare. Obviously if you're getting it from a medical establishment, it is not contaminated. Uh, but it does happen, yes. Um, so it's possible. I don't have an exact percentage in the county. It would actually, it's impossible for me on a drug screen to tell the difference between illicit marijuana and what you buy at a dispensary. So I can't tell you if that person has a card, whether or not the fentanyl came from the marijuana they bought at the dispensary, or maybe they got it from a friend.
Is that causing deaths also?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Uh, the marijuana, uh, certainly contributes. Um, it's not a biggest player. I will point out one other thing, the xylazine here. I know we just had animal protection. That's actually a horse tranquilizer and, uh, it's being used to cut the fentanyl. Uh, it looks and tastes like fentanyl. So one more thing for the public, if you're buying things on the street, about 7% and that's up from last year is horse tranquilizer, which of course has no human use at all. Um, it's not a concentration that's high enough to kill you in and of itself, but it definitely contributes to the fatality.
And the reason I ask that question is so that when we do work on this educational video to include, um, buying marijuana off the streets because it's often referred to as the gateway drug, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that's where many young people start.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
For them to be aware of this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Robbins.
I had, uh, one last, uh, point to hit on and, and a question.
Yes, sir.
Several months ago, we talked about, and I, I believe I had sent an email to, uh, County Attorney Mike Dyer. I know the sheriff's office, along with, uh, the board I had mentioned earlier, we were trying to get Narcan, uh, Narcan available to our school resource officers or our guardians.
Yes.
I, I know we've hit some roadblocks in the past. Do we have any updates, uh, uh, any feedback from the school board? Cause I know there was some tension there, uh, initially.
I was not involved with the school board in any capacity, so I cannot comment on that. Um, so I don't, I don't actually have any guidance to give you there. I was not part of any of those conversations.
Attorney Dyer, do you have any updates?
I don't, but I can find out and make sure council's aware.
Thank you. I, I'd be open to, um, getting them, uh, getting the schools the resources that they need. I know that they've, uh, the sheriff's office been asking for it and the guardians have been asking for it. Whatever we can do, um, I'm good with.
If anyone has any other questions about methods of suicide, homicide, stuff like that, all those percentages are in the annual report or I can give them to you now. And accidental deaths as well. Uh, and I, it was, I was close. It's 43% of our accidents are, uh, drug overdoses with 19% being, uh, transportation and then 30% being falls in the elderly. And shockingly, uh, and I think this is, uh, much credit to Beach Patrol and the lifeguards, uh, as many beaches that we have, uh, 31 drownings for the year, which is, I think, very good, um, for the size beach we have and the amount of water we have. So I think that's, I mean, when you, when, and when I hear the stories of the drownings, it's, there's usually some drugs or just something bizarre where the person can't swim and just decides they see the ocean and wants to walk out and that's the end of it. Seriously. So I give them credit there.
Dr. Foulter, how many medical examiners are there in the United States?
About 500 practicing.
Let's see, 50 states. We have 67 counties and so that's not a very large pool.
Right.
I'm really looking forward to the new medical examiner's facility opening up in.
November, uh, October. I think we are like 40 days from substantial completion. And then there's a bu, uh, punch list to do, but yeah, we're close. And I should report to council that I did have a very good interview with an associate, uh, last week. So I'm optimistic we'll be mostly fully staffed when we move in. So that will be excellent.
Well, my, my point was going to be that as exciting as the facility is and it stated. Well, my, my point was going to be that as exciting as the facility is, and it stated the art, you're, and I'm, I'm really pleased that you're pleased with it, but it would be useless without the right person there. And out of a very small pool of people, I believe we're fortunate to have you here. I've seen a series of medical examiners. You're the best that we've had and you do a great job and...
Thank you.
I, that's only going to get better with the tools that you, you're going to have now. So.
Absolutely. And for count, to make a point, I've been reaching out to local colleges and universities and pairing up all those relations.
Good.
I want to hit the ground running with education, certainly at a collegiate level and then move down to a high school level as soon as we start.
Good. Going to call for a vote in a minute. We really didn't need a vote for this, but I think it's a great idea, just out of respect for, for you to have the vote on accepting your report. Before I do, Michael Dyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Robbins, I did confirm with Paula Soria that the opioid advisory committee, which I know you're involved in, did send a letter to the school board on that subject, but had not heard back.
Thank you.
Can I elaborate on that comment? How long ago was that sent?
In April.
Wow. There's a news story worthy.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Then all in favor of accepting this report and we're, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We are glad to see the numbers going down on suicides. Hope that continues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to...
No, go ahead.
I think there was some discussion about coming back with the resolution, but I don't think there was a motion made. So, and maybe that's something you want to bring up during your time, but...
That's fine. I'll make a note of it, Mr. Chair.
That brings us to item six, constitutional offices funding included in Volusia County's budget.
Good morning, Council. Aaron Van Cleek, Deputy Finance Director. So this item is to basically just show documents that are in our recommended budget book and show where the funding for the constitutional officers come from. Talk about the budget process and approval. So all the budgets from the constitutional officers are due to us by June 1st by statute, with the exception of the tax collector that is due August 1st, so due today. They have all met their deadlines. The tax collector actually submitted earlier this week, or last week. So all the budgets are in, they're all attached to this agenda item for your review. The tax collector and property appraisers budgets are approved by DOR. And then of course, the sheriff and the supervisor of elections are approved by council. The clerk of court, the portion that is funded from us, that is required by Article Five of the Constitution is approved by council. And then they also have other funding for the clerk's office as well. This pie chart just gives you a summary of the total funding by constitutional office. And then each of these slides will break down the funding for each office and if you have any questions. So I'll just run through these quickly. The operating expenses for the sheriff's office, those are paid by the county, not through the sheriff's budget. And that is for utility expenses and rental properties for District Two, Three, the District Two office, District Three office, and the helipad hangar for the helicopters. And then also the utilities expenses from those. The capital improvements that's listed there, that is for some building envelope and improvements to restrooms, bringing, bringing them up to ADA standards, some HVAC improvements and caulking around some of their buildings. The grants and aids portion that's listed there, that actually represents payments made to the CRA within the Public Safety Fund. It, it's going to be reclassified to non-departmental when we do the adopted budget. Our budget, when it's set up, it's done by department codes. And so with this being a new fund, when it was put in, the department code in public safety is 400 for the sheriff. So the CRA got put in as 400. It should be non-departmental, so that'll actually be taken off for the adopted. The interfund transfers, that line represents what is actually sent to the sheriff. You have to net out the $22,125, $125,779. That's actually the funding that is sent from the MSD to the Public Safety Fund. Then it is sent to the sheriff. So really, when we less out operating transfers, that is an operating transfer. It's coming from one of our operating funds, the MSD, to the Public Safety Fund to be sent to the sheriff. And that is for the patrol services in the unincorporated area. And then the reserves that are listed there is a small amount of reserves in the federal forfeiture sharing treasury fund for sheriff operations. For the supervisor of elections, you see the funding listed there. The operating expenses represent the utility expenses for the elections headquarters and warehouse as well, as well as the rental costs for the elections headquarters. And then the interfund transfers that's listed there, that is the direct funding provided to the supervisor of elections to fund her budget request. For the property appraiser, it's all listed as operating expenses. You'll see that on the property tax collector, because those are commission based offices. So for us, it's not an interfund transfer. It is commissions we're paying to that office that's statutorily required. So for the property appraiser, 12.1 million of that is the, it represents the commissions paid to the office. And then we also pay by statute $125,000 for mailing the trim notices to the public in August. For the tax collector, same thing. It's all listed as operating because it is commissions paid. We have 11.9 million estimated in commissions paid to the tax collector. And that is for both the property appraiser and the tax collector. That's on behalf of the county, the school board and the municipalities, because we pay for those commissions in total. And then the remaining 130,000 is for the tax bill mailings that get mailed out for the tax roll once approved. And it's a little bit higher than the trim because of the return envelopes that they have to mail out as well with the, with the tax bill. And then for the clerk of the court, your operating expenses represent communications, property insurance and utilities for the clerk of court. And then the capital improvements, that is actually for Wi-Fi system and hardware upgrades done by RIT department in-house. And then the grants and aids represent, 2,000 of that is for recording filing fees and copies that county departments request through the clerk's office. And then the remaining 2.9, almost 3 million is sent directly to the clerk. It's partially offset by the court technology fee revenue that we receive that's in the amount of 1.4 million. So that gives you the funding breakdown, if you have any questions. And also the constitutional officers are all, have all expressed their availability for any of you to ask any questions, just feel free to give them a call.
Vice Chair Robbins.
I don't know if you need a motion to accept the presentation. I can make that. If not, that's okay. I just wanted to say, you know, thank you. I don't think, you know, our, our finance guys really get enough credit. And what goes into the balance of Amendment 10, you know, it still has the new car smell with it and in the working relationship that you guys have to now have. These little presentations, they haven't been done since the inception of Amendment 10. Yes, they've been inside the budget process. That makes it real easy for everybody to look at this stuff. But I just wanted to say, you know, you guys do a hell of a job. We appreciate it and keep up the good working relationship. I don't think there's been a better time in Volusia County in terms of working relationship within our different areas than, than right now and we're proud of you. Thank you.
We do have a motion to accept your report, which is, is necessary on this one. Is there a second for that? A second. By Troy Kent. And... I'll go ahead and call for the vote. There's only four of us in the room, but all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, the officers that attended here. I saw Lisa Lewis somewhere. Hi Lisa, thank you for coming. Thank you for being a good steward of your budget. That brings us to item seven, support for Alachua Conservation Trust efforts to access federal grants for land conservation within Volusia County. This is a, a vote to potentially accept $25 million, correct, Mr.?
Well, it's a letter of support so they can be competitive in the process to win potentially that award. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So this is part of our strategy with Volusia Forever, as you know, to stretch our local tax dollars as far as possible. And it's part of our strategy to align funding partners. And your staff is presenting you with an opportunity today to partner with a really great land trust in Florida who's been around for 35 years and has an outstanding reputation, but also success in accessing these federal dollars for county land conservation programs. So with that, I'd like to introduce Tom Kay from Alachua Conservation Trust to give you an overview of the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, which is essentially a co-investment of federal dollars in our local program. They take successful conservation programs and co-invest in them. So he'll present, he has a brief presentation for you and then our ask at the end. Thank you.
Good morning, Council Chair and Council members. I appreciate this opportunity. You've heard a lot from your constituents here in this area about the project, a little bit of the words gotten out. A little bit about the, the organization, we've been around 35 years. Our name has been a misnomer. We work in a much larger area than just Alachua County, of course. I'm myself, as a Marion County resident, I have one of my staff here today, George Johnson, who actually lives in Volusia County in Deltona. So we've got people kind of stationed all over the state. We work all the way up to the Georgia line, all the way over the Gulf Coast, about as far south as, you know, Volusia Lake, Sumter Counties and looking in some other areas as well. So the Regional Conservation Partnership Program is a program that was developed by the USDA, the US Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service. And the idea was basically to leverage dollars. And so I think one of the great things that happened when you all passed the Volusia Forever Program in 2020 is it allowed you to tap into a lot of other dollar programs. And so in addition to state funding, there's also a lot of federal dollars. And the key to these programs, of course, is having that local funding source that allows you to bring back those federal tax dollars into our region. And I'll walk through this really quickly. So I've had the great pleasure of working with, and our staff, with Danielle and Brad and Tim and others from your staff and working on this idea over the last couple of years. And one of the things that's happened, in addition to generally speaking, there's $300 million every year comes out of the farm bill specifically for this program to sort of keep conservation, or keep our agricultural lands sort of permanently in that station. So the idea is, you know, people continue to be able to farm the lands, but they're giving up the development rights on those properties by entering in these programs. And there's some other components to the program as well that I'll touch on, but that's sort of one of the main key. In the last, you know, year and a half, the Inflation Reduction Act passed. So in addition to basically having $300 million every year, the legislate, or the Congress passed the initiative, they'll put almost $5 billion into this program, 4.95 billion dollars over the next five years. One of the biggest benefits of that is when we first started talking about this project, when there was only $300 million a year, you could put 10 million, that you could apply for $10 million a year. Now you can apply for grants up to $25 million a year. With a program like yours where you're spending about $8 million a year into conservation programs anyways, you have far greater leverage with your dollars. And so that's, that's our plan is actually to apply for $25 million of funding that's available. The other great benefit was it used to be like you had to have for every, say if you were going to ask for $10 million, you need to have $20 million in match. Because you're trying, trying to get these dollars out quickly, now basically you just need about a one-to-one match and that's what we're working on. So we'll be asking for about 25 million and leveraging $25 million from an assortment of things. As you can see on that map, and I'll have a couple more for you to take a look at there, the working area is all Volusia County, because we want to be able to capture any projects that, you know, Volusia Forever is working on, that the county's working on, as well as parts of Flagler and Lake County. Say, well, why are we doing that? Well, part of it's because, and you'll hear it from your next presentation from Jason Lawrence and Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation, we're trying to capture some of those dollars that the state is putting into the Florida Wildlife Corridor and some of those programs. Doesn't necessarily mean about Volusia dollars are going into Wake or Flagler County. We're just benefiting from some of those programs that are happening with the state and some of the stuff that we're working on privately with landowners outside of that. So it's given us a little bit bigger working area, ensuring we can get some partnership from Florida Department of Agriculture Consumer Services, St. John's River Water Management District, as well as, you know, Florida Department Environmental Protection. So that just kind of gives you a little bit of an overview on that. So what are the primary goals, what we're trying to do? The biggest one is land protection. So we're trying to increase land protection via conservation easements. So while you may be acquiring lands outright, you've got projects like that and that can count towards your match contribution for this program. The big focus of this one, of course, is protecting primarily agricultural lands and that's by through conservation easements so that we can continue to farm it. And one of the big things I always talk about, especially when up in DC, I think one of the biggest things we can do, I was listening to some of the comments that were happening here earlier, is protecting domestic food security. And I think one thing we saw in the last few years during the pandemic was, you know, supply chains breaking down. That impacted farmers dramatically. And by protecting our domestic food security, we're not as reliant on places outside the state or outside the country for our food services. So I think that's one of the big benefits that I see also somebody who owns a farm of benefiting, you know, benefits from using this program. So the big part is leveraging the Volusia Forever Program by more conservation easements in the area. And the second one, and I mentioned George Johnson from our staff, who previously worked for USDA NRCS before he retired from there, is also increasing the amount of land management to complement regional conservation plans and protected things. So as it is, anyone who's got sort of a background in agriculture, there's already a lot of programs that are rolled out by US Department of Agriculture, NRCS for doing different things on farms. Maybe it's rotational grazing, putting fencing in certain places to keep them out of wetlands and things like that. But this provides a whole other pool of money that's available to tap into by getting into this program. And at least a couple other things there allow for greater outreach, making landowners more aware of these programs that are available so they can actually use these programs to their benefit to improve things on their farm or to ensure to continue the legacy of keeping that farm in their, in their family. And also additional, sort of being able to assess what the outcomes and the benefits of doing some of these protections are in place. They just put up another map. That's just a little bit closer area of primarily Volusia County, but where you're looking at, and I'll let Jason talk a little bit more about the Florida Wildlife Corridor thing, with those priority areas there. Of course, there's areas outside the Florida Wildlife Corridor that we know, especially if someone talked about ground truthing, that people know that are important for wildlife that are moving through there, they will necessarily be excluded, but there's probably going to be a priority on that because the state and other agencies are putting a priority on those things, which is, which is important not only for wildlife, but again, protecting our agricultural land. I throw this map up here just to give you an idea. I think Brad noted about this. One of the things that we do bring to the table is we've successfully completed two RCPP applications already. That Surface to Springs was approved in 2021. That funding was primarily for protecting uplands in north central Florida, primarily protecting groundwater and our freshwater springs in that region. The other one we did last year was Forest to Gulf. That was protecting primarily the farmland preservation area in Marion County and areas in Levy and Citrus County. That got approved. The Surface to Springs was for 7.15 million. Forest to Gulf was for 7.85 million dollars. We're also a partner in that O2O, you've probably heard a lot about. That's the Ocal, the Osceola Wildlife Corridor. North Florida Land Trust, one of our partners, is a lead on that, but we're also a partner in that. And then you can see the map there of the, what will be on the next proposal, which is Lake to Lagoon. Kind of overview very quickly of just how those expenditures were happening. So we're, we're going to be through this proposal asking for $25 million from the federal government. That's from, you know, that would probably start next year, 2024, if we're awarded. So the deadline is August 18th to apply for this funding. We find out about three or four months whether or not we're going to get the funding. And then it takes about eight or nine months period of time to get all the contracts in place to get that funding available from NRCS. And it's not like we get a slug of $25 million. It's a reimbursable grant, but as we complete projects, NRCS has given us those funds. And they're going to primarily be used for four things, buying conservation easements, land management contracts, funding for reimbursement to partner expenses, including Volusia Forever and for the administration of the actual program. On the right-hand side there, you can see the different partners that are already on board. We're hoping today you all get on board with us for this. But we've also got the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDAC, US Fish and Wildlife Service, Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, St. John's, looks like Lake County may come in as a small partner, the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, Stat旦 University, the North Prescribed Burn Association, and a number of other smaller entities, some of which nonprofit organizations who are here today speaking on behalf of this program. So again, just a quick overview before I get to my last slide here. You know, the big thing is, is this will provide, of that $25 million, it'll, it'll provide about $21 million for additional conservation easement purchase. So, you know, basically doing a one-to-one on all the dollars you're spending on that program for purchasing conservation easements. And it'll also allow us to leverage other pots of money, including state funding and things like that. And then the idea is to put about a million dollars towards land management contracts for private landowners. I know that for, it can be things for like fencing, cover crops, equipment, things of that nature, programs that are already in place, but will provide some additional dollars to do cost share with those private landowners, agricultural producers, farmers, things of that like. And then finally, the last slide here is just, and then I can take any questions that you might have. I'm sort of our two ask is one, a letter of support for an authorized allocation of up to $20 million of the Volusia Forever funding to be used as match for these projects within Volusia County portions of the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. And second, because there will be a period if we get, successfully get this grant, where there may be some mild changes and things like that, say they only give us, you know, $23 million and we have to change our match money to allow the county manager to approve all proposals related documents that do not increase the funding match allocation authorized by the Volusia Council.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you reaching out to us for this. It's just good stewardship of our money. We do have a couple questions, looks like from the council for you or Dr. Burball. First, David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned a date a few minutes ago, but did you, can you repeat that deadline date?
Yes, so we have to get the proposal into NRCS by August 18.
And my next question is regarding conservation easements. Either you or Brad can answer this. I know we've created our own agreements with private landowners. How does a private landowner, if they wanted to, get out of a conservation easement on their land?
They can't. I mean, the purpose of it is perpetual, so it's, they're permanently, it runs with the land. Say you had a farm, even if you sell it to your son or to a daughter, you know, sell it to Brad to run it, stays, it's perpetual, so it runs with the land, doesn't go away.
Meaning, so they can't buy their way out of it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Danny Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. Questions for Brad. I see on page two, "In order to leverage our local funds, the county must commit to a significant portion of match dedicated to land conservation over the course of a five-year grant period." Now, is this 20 million every year or 20 million collectively, and then there's an additional 5 million on the bottom line?
It's 20 million over five years. So from '24 to '29, we would be committing to spending 20 million on land conservation. ACT has went out and found 5 million from other partners. So we're saying 20 million for our portion, but they went to the Department of Ag and DEP and got an additional 5 million, saying that they will invest in this project.
Now, if, if a commitment is made, just to be clear, can you say, where would that money, once again, come from?
Volusia Forever Ad Valorem Assessment.
And do we have that money in there, or is it calculated to be in there where we don't have to put an additional tax increase on the public or put this out in another form or?
That is correct. Right now, you have about 35% of this money in reserves, however, we're working some acquisitions at the moment, but your ad valorem is generating about 8 to 9 million a year for conservation purchases.
And would this, and I appreciate you bearing with me, would this affect any of the projects or ranking lists that we've already identified? Would it push some of those further down or delay those at all?
No, it would actually, so the council-approved list has 18 properties on it. There are six right now that are conservation easements, about 5,000 acres, that we are looking for partners on. So if we were to receive this money, we could go out and start negotiating with those six properties that council has approved tomorrow, because we have a 50-50 funding partner.
All right. Bear with me, just saying, how does this differ other than just the funding and the speed of it from what we're doing already? To our land acquisitions and identifying these properties?
So, yes, sir.
Sorry. That's okay, go ahead.
So right now, we're competing on an individual project basis. So we're taking individual projects to the state and competing against, for example, they just received 180 applications for the Rural and Family Lands Program. When we put an application in, we're competing with all of those. What this does is establish a pool of money that we will have access to for all of our projects. It eliminates the competition essentially if we, if we get awarded the funding.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you both. Councilman Troy Kent.
At this time, Chairman, I don't want to interrupt you, I was just going to make a motion to approve, and the motion simply would, would have exactly what ACT and our staff is requesting with number one and number two listed right here.
And I'd second.
Because we have the suggested motion to approve by Troy Kent with a second by Matt Reinhart. We do have a couple members of the public who would like to speak on this issue before I call a vote. Suzanne Schiber.
Suzanne Schiber, Ormond Beach. Thank you to Alachua Conservation Trust, Statson, and others for bringing this grant forward. Supporting land conservation through partnerships extends our dollars further and assist in outreach and education of the Volusia Forever Program. Volusia Forever staff has put forth an outstanding effort with bringing this grant forward for long-term planning. I often hear about private landowner property rights. This mutually beneficial program for restoration and land maintenance evolves to what a public-private partnership can be out of respect for property owner rights. By helping farmers, we help ourselves. Pertinent to the conversation but rarely said are the reasons Volusia County residents voted for land conservation in the first place. In the four and a half years I've come before the council, most of my time at this podium has been spent talking about funding, transparency, taxes, matching funds, water quality, and quantity. I realized when putting a presentation together for teenagers recently that I rarely talk about wildlife habitat, where our food comes from, or the positive economics of land conservation. What about preserving our pristine areas, protecting our water, and not wanting every parcel clear-cut? What about enjoying life by kayaking, hiking, fishing, bird watching, horseback riding, and camping? What about being good stewards of our land, and what about just enjoying life in the moment? Only the 75% of the public who voted to tax themselves for land conservation know the answers to why they did, but those reasons are the purpose for all other discussions. So I'm thankful to the residents of our county that recognize our quality of life means preserving land, not only for today, but for our future generations as well. Thank you, Volusia County residents. Please vote in favor of the Lake to Lagoon partnership, and I thank you for your time. And for the record, the earlier goals that were tabled would have offset this nicely. Thank you.
John Nicholson.
John, I'm from Daytona Beach side. I had several questions, I think they were all answered, I'm hoping, because I'm a little bit weary of what we went through with Sunrail, about money going out of the county. It seems to say that this money will stay in the county. But what we donate in terms of Volusia Forever, it stays here. All we're doing is enhancing that with additional funds. Secondly, I like the idea that it's agricultural land as well, so I'm asking you to vote. This is 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Robbins.
Sorry, Chair, if you'd allow me, just ask one more question. Brad, is there an out if we can't fulfill the funding over that course of that five years? You know, if the bottom falls out of everything and worst-case scenario, what are we on the hook for, and are we going to be penalized somehow? I'm just, I'm for it, I just want to make sure we have all bases covered.
So I'm going to defer to Mr. Kay since he has experience.
I hope we don't end up in that scenario. Well, as the lead partner, ACT would be on the hook for that, so I'd be probably scrambling and try to find other match if that were the scenario that happens. The other thing I think, you know, I haven't seen that happen yet, the RCPP program as a whole didn't start till 2014, so it's post-recession, so the feds have never really had to go through a scenario where that might happen. I would envision what would probably happen, Councilmember Robbins, is that we probably have a scenario where you go back and say, hey, we had $12 million in match, can we reallocate it and say we only get, you know, $12 million in federal, federal dollars?
So Volusia, I'm sorry, so Volusia County or any other partners in parts of the state, there's no penalty for them saying, hey, we can't do it this time? Because I say this because of what we're dealing with with Sunrail, we can't get out of it, you know what I mean? And this is a great concern of ours, no matter, no matter the topic, so.
No, it's very fair. I mean, I think for us, that's sort of the big risk we take as the lead partner on this. But I think in that scenario, what I would look at is, you know, going to our other partners that are on that list, and there's a lot of them fortunately, and go into particularly the state that has a lot of money right now going into those programs, ask them to pick up their part. We'd probably be going out and looking to some of the landowners, and some people donate their conservation easements for the tax benefits, federal tax benefits, and trying to use that to make up that difference if we were to end up in that scenario. I mean, I'm cognizant of that because, you know, we never know what's going to happen economically, and then give them a period of time, but the hope is that we don't run into this. We'd come up with some kind of back, with that whatever rise.
Okay, thank you again, and we have a motion on the table, and I'm going to read the motion because it is a two-part. It's approval of the letter of support and authorizing the county manager to approve all proposal-related documents that do not increase the funding match allocation authorized by council. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. And that brings up a timely presentation by Dr. Jason Lawrence, the Florida Wildlife Corridor update. I heard you at Tiger Bay last year, and it was so impressive. It's been, it's been a long time now, and so I thought it would be a great time for an update. As you know, I hope I'm not stealing some of your thunder, but as you know, Volusia County has been a leader in land conservation, even before Volusia Forever for the previous 20 years. The community, the environmental community, citizens have come together, and as has been mentioned, the previous council had the foresight to start the Volusia Conservation Corridor. We're all proud of that now. The Wildlife Corridor has come in and is just helping us to increase that, and I hope that you're going to talk about connectivity because that's so important. Just welcome and.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce him. Yep, so we have Jason Lawrence with us. He's the Chief Conservation Officer for the Florida Wildlife, I'm sorry, Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation. Their name changed recently. So Jason is the Chief Conservation Officer, and I will give credit to the foundation because there are 17 conservation land-buying programs in the state, and we were, we learn from each other and we talk, but we were really working in silos. The, the foundation has brought a lot of us together, practitioners, even developers and planners, to collectively vision together. And so that's been their role, and they were really instrumental in getting the Wildlife Corridor designation, geographic designation, passed by the state legislature. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to have a chance to speak with you a little bit about the Florida Wildlife Corridor. I'm specifically going to focus on the geography. What our organization does is secondary to that as a foundation, but, you know, the Florida Wildlife Corridor geography is a framework around which the state can look at all the conservation efforts that are going on in people's backyards throughout the 18-million-acre footprint that the corridor represents, and work on strategizing and see how, what they do impacts others. And I also wanted to thank each of you on the council for the time and energy you all put into making decisions. It's important. What you, what you do is of consequence. And one of my all-time favorite quotes is a Leonardo da Vinci quote, paraphrasing here, "One has no right to love or hate that which one does not first adequately understand." And great love stems from great knowledge of the beloved object, and if you know it but little, you can love it but little if at all. And so understanding is a key part to making decisions that are going to be lasting, and again, of consequence. So I'd like to present a few slides here that would serve as a tool for you all to help make decisions, and I would invite you, if there's anything that we can do at the foundation to introduce you to experts or sit down around a table together and work through some plans and roll up our sleeves, we would love to do that. Again, we're committed not just to any one corner of the state, but to making this all work together. A very brief history here, in 1847, eight generations ago, the US Treasury Secretary commissioned Buckingham Smith, a St. Augustine lawyer, to go down to South Florida to answer two questions. Can we drain the Everglades? And if we can, should we? Buckingham Smith spent months doing his due diligence, trying to gather as much information as he could to help make a recommendation back to Congress the following year in 1848. And in reading the report he made, I was impressed with the thoroughness and the effort he made, felt like it was a good faith effort. I was surprised by some of the poetic language he used to describe the beauty of the Everglades, and then you flip a few more pages, and he says unsurprisingly, at the time, knowing the rest of the story, "But the practical man would see the Everglades as worse and worthless." And he recommended that they drain the Everglades and develop that area. And as you probably know, not long after that, in, actually about a century later, in 1947, the feelings about the value of the Everglades had changed, and it was designated as a national park. So when you look far enough in time, you can see that attitudes and values and appreciation changes as the landscape changes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jason, I can't pronounce your last name, so.
Oh, that's okay.
I just wanted to give you a little foundation. I think the council had previously decided on time for presentations. I know you're giving a lot of historical perspective. I want to make sure you.
Oh, yeah.
Value your time to give us the meat and potatoes of Volusia, so I want to make sure you get everything you need, that we need, because we recently made that decision, so.
Understood, yeah. I, 15 minutes, I think, was where I'm trying to hit, so if I'm, if I'm going long, I'll.
And I want to make, the reason I'm saying, I want to make sure you're getting anything that's vital to us for making decisions.
Absolutely. Okay, so noted. Yeah, so you just, to wrap that, wrap that piece up there, I understand that as our, as our appreciation or evaluation changes, we need tools to do that, and the Florida Wildlife Corridor model is one of those tools. And if you take a look at the, the map on the right, it's a watercolor map, you can see there are two main trunks of the Florida Wildlife Corridor model, and one goes right through Volusia County, goes up the east coast, connects the Florida Bay and the Everglades with the Okeechobee Swamp up there to the north, and another main trunk branches off around the Disney Wilderness Preserve headwaters of the Everglades area over to Alabama and the Panhandle. And the connectivity is the key piece of this. If we are going to retain the values that we've invested in in preserving 10 million acres of conservation land throughout the state, then connectivity is a key to preserving that and making us resilient. As populations of folks from out of Florida move into the state, we need to figure out where to put them, and to govern our land use planning based on the priorities on the ground. So the Florida Wildlife Corridor model is based upon science, but recognizing what we've already invested, and there are 75 state parks within the Florida Wildlife Corridor, several right here within Volusia County, 32 state forests, again, that make up the the network of investment that the state and individual counties have made. Again, biodiversity and the species is another key part of that, what are the, what are some of the values? But on top of all that are local economies and individuals' qualities of life and livelihoods. So we recognize that there are jobs associated with and tied to the value of the corridor, including a return on investment annually from the economic opportunity that the corridor represents to a tune of $30 billion per year. And as we grow, we also want to make sure we reinforce to folks that the Florida Wildlife Corridor is the status currently of the connected nature of the landscape. We are not looking to put a new wildlife pathway through a community that, that doesn't exist. We're looking at where are the wildlife going now, making sure that we don't foreclose on their historic routes so that they end up being displaced onto a roadway or into a community that would cause any problems. The corridor itself is based on the best spatial data available, 26 priority ecological models overlaid to develop this corridor, and seven connectivity layers that would show how those different ecological areas interact with one another. As a result of that, you have this series of hubs and connections that make up the Florida Wildlife Corridor. The dark green there are those 10 million acres that are already conserved, and the light green are the opportunity areas. So we're looking at an 8-million-acre footprint throughout the state, 200,000 acres here in Volusia County that are opportunity acres. And again, a priority here for us is looking at where are the pinch points? Where are the points of pressure for acquisition? What are those priorities? One of the things we look at is geometry. Are there narrow areas or bottlenecks within that 8 million acre opportunity area that are under pressure, land conversion? Are there other areas that might be wider and not narrow bottlenecks, but have significant development going on? And as mentioned by the previous presentation with Mr. Kay, there are other land acquisition programs within the state that are very important and can help, but they won't solve the whole problem. So if you take a look at where Ruling Family Lands Protection Plan and Florida Forever fit, there's about 2 million acres identified of that 8 million acre opportunity area that they can help solve. And as Dr. Burbaugh also mentioned, there are 180 other applicants for the Ruling Family Lands Program coming in. So there's more competition, and there are going to be more acres available in there, but there's still a lot of areas that we aren't thinking about. So Volusia Forever is a great way for the county to identify their own priorities outside of that Florida Forever and Ruling Family Lands Protection Plan program. And what our organization has done is we've identified some places throughout the state that we think are under particular stress and pressure, and some of that falls within Volusia County. So I've just got three more slides here to spend a little bit of time on. But just to give you a little idea of what you're looking at here, the light translucent background yellow, that's the Florida Wildlife Corridor boundary. Purple, those are conservation eased lands that could come from different types of conservation easements. The darker green, that's state conservation areas. The red areas in these maps are local conservation areas, so county parks and preserves. And you can't see it here, but you'll see some in the next. There's a brown polygon there that represents federal lands. And I just want to point out here that the way the Florida Wildlife Corridor model was made, it is made by these spatial, all these spatial layers, and it's not ground truth to property lines. So you can't look at the line on the corridor map and say, this is exactly where the boundary is between good and bad, or priority three versus priority four. It takes local staff, and your staff is phenomenal, by the way. I'm really impressed with the history of Volusia County for conservation and also what you have going on right now. So I think you've done a tremendous job. And if there's a way that we can help to differentiate between where that line might be drawn and what acres might be important for you to prioritize and consider, we'd be happy to do that. Backing up a little bit to the county as a whole, you can see that there's quite a bit of colored polygons in there representing conservation lands. You do have 200,000 acres that are still a part of that opportunity area, and Volusia Forever is going to help chip away at that. But that's a lot of acres, and it's not all going to be conserved. So again, in the way of prioritization, we've identified some areas where, fairly large circles here, where you can see that there's not connectivity. There are some gaps. So when you take a look, for instance, in some of the, the circle on the left, on the western side there, you see a couple of places where there are contiguous conservation boundaries going from the, oh, I lost my slide there. There we go. If you take a look at the purple, that conservation eased property goes into the blue, which is private conservation, so that's mitigation banking property, and over to the red, which is a county property, there's a gap before you get to some of the state land there on the left side of that circle. That gap represents an opportunity for fragmentation or for conservation. So the Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation is hoping that some of these gaps get closed through Volusia Forever funding and other land acquisition programs. Similarly, over on the right-hand side, you have Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge, and you've got some patchworks of properties there, and there are a lot of gaps. So how that land ultimately ends up in the next decade is going to make a big difference between whether the corridor is connected or fragmented, and whether or not we have a national treasure in Merritt Island that is connected meaningfully to the corridor, or whether it no longer is. So that's the last slide that I have, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to field those.
Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question. Can you go back to the previous slide?
Absolutely.
I'm trying to understand, if you can, if you or staff can give me a better understanding of, you mentioned gaps. Is that these green areas here, is that what you're saying, are gaps that your organization is proposing?
Yeah, so the yellow boundary of the Florida Wildlife Corridor is semi-transparent. So you can see right there, there is a red county polygon property there on the.
To the north?
On the south.
Oh, yes, I see it.
Yeah, right there, that red. And then there's a semi-transparent yellow gap between the darker green state property. And so, so closing the gaps in the corridor would mean looking at that translucent yellow and seeing where you can make connections. A small gap, which you can take a look at, Councilman Santiago, is between the two red properties. There are two county properties that are fairly close together in the upper right-hand corner of that circle, and there's a small gap in between there. So that's one thing to look at. Another thing would be just in local road plans. Where are places where you can establish permeability features like bridging or culverts or creating ledges under existing bridges and doing fencing to, again, make sure that there's more permeability for wildlife with roads?
I have one more question, Mr. Chair. Brad, is there a overlay that shows where your future plans are for the, as it pertains to this, the program that we currently run?
Not necessarily an overlay. There's a list of properties. So we deal in willing sellers. So it's really, we target individuals, landowners, large landowners that are in our Florida Forever project areas or adjacent. So that's kind of what we go after. We have a layer of where all of these projects are. For example, in this area that Jason's discussing, we have a 900 acre property, and it hasn't been changed to conservation land yet, but this portion council approved, this was the Palm Bluff Extension. So this was 1,200 acres that council bought last year. It just hasn't been changed to, in concert with the Water Management District, this was the Palm Bluff Expansion.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then, just as a point of reference, you can see how successful our small lot acquisition program has been. See all of those red dots? That's one of those antiquated subdivisions where we've bought individual lots, all of this here. So that's a small lot. This is people who came in the 60s and wanted to buy a piece of Florida, and they basically bought wilderness with no infrastructure. So now their families are, we reach out to these people and say, we have a small lot program, because what we've seen in the South is we have individuals who will aggregate these lots to try to get to the 25 acres to build something out in the middle of nowhere that has no infrastructure.
Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brad, this is probably for you, sorry. And it's getting off of the topic a little bit, but you hit about roads and fencing and things of that nature. You had mentioned a while back, Brad, in a conversation about how many in Volusia County do we have of those underpass areas for wildlife to travel from one area to the other?
Yes.
How many does Volusia have on major roadways?
We have four.
We have four.
Four, one across, one under 40. And we have the most of any county under I-4. We have three.
Okay, so that probably answers the next question we have most in any of the county. I was curious, has there been any talk about expansion of that?
I think it's always part of the conversation.
Okay.
And there are some dollars now for green infrastructure and some of those wildlife crossings for NDOT's budget, so.
There's a reason why I was going there, it's social media. I mean, you, all of a sudden, you see the feeds pop up where animals cross over the roads and are victim to vehicular deaths as a result of it. So, and it's safety for the people as well, but I was more so thinking about that, so. Okay. All right, thank you.
That brings up a question I was going to ask. It's a perfect segue. Tell us why connectivity is important in the corridor.
Yeah, there are different ways to look at connectivity. From the, probably the most obvious piece is you're looking at biodiversity in areas that, you know, just to give you an example, the Florida panther and the black bear are two large charismatic species that people sort of fall in love with and understand. If you have fragmentation that separates subpopulations of those large animals, you can have some genetic issues build up, like with the Florida panther. That can affect populations over time. And as we look to be stewards of our natural areas and these 10 million acres we already have preserved, making sure that we have appropriate links between the larger healthy populations and the satellite populations is really critical to make sure that people, when they want to have those experiences, that possibility when they're out on the trail or paddling of seeing some of our diversity, that they would still be there for future generations.
Thank you. And I know we're focusing on Volusia County, but just quickly, how's the program going throughout the state?
You know, the visibility of this geographic framework's increased tremendously since the bill passed in 2021. I just want to underscore, though, Volusia County has been doing a tremendous job. I would love to see 65 other counties, you know, sort of follow a lot of the work and lead you all have done. I appreciate that a great deal. And again, providing the right details and science and perspective is going to be really the difference maker going forward. If we can help in any way, we'd love to do that, roll up our sleeves and come alongside you and see if we can be successful together.
Thank you very much. We actually have three people from the audience. As you can see, there's, people have come out specifically to hear you here, and I don't know if they have questions for you or not, so stand by.
Okay.
Just for a second, Cynthia Qua-Walser. And again, you'll have to straighten out your name when you get up to the microphone.
Oh, good. Well, it is still morning, so good morning to all of you council members. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to speak with you. I am a, I live in Deland, and I'm a member of the Deland Quaker Worship Group. I also serve as a member of Faith's Care of Creation Initiative with a focus on increasing our resiliency as a community in the face of Volusia County's increasing risk of flooding due to climate change. Faith represents 31 member congregations across Volusia County. Our membership was greatly impacted by the floodwaters of Hurricane Ian. I am here to give testimony regarding Florida Wildlife Corridor and how it crossroads with our concerns regarding flooding, ongoing development, and mitigation against the impacts of climate change. Enhancing resiliency is critical to human survival and the survival of animals and plant life. All species of plants, animals, and human life are interconnected as we engage in the complex dance to balance our care of creation and human needs for development. The preservation and possible expansion of the Florida Wildlife Corridor has important implications for the quality of life in Volusia County and across the state of Florida. Wildlife corridors are links across landscapes that connect patches of fragmented habitat and offer safe passage to animals without human intrusion. They support natural processes such as migration that occur in healthy environments and help avoid human confrontation with the wildlife it preserves. They also, I think a lot of this was already covered by the gentleman who just spoke, so I'm going to jump forward, but I really valued what he was sharing with all of us. I am friends with the Josselins, who have owned and run Common Ground Farm here in the unincorporated properties near Deland. Having been a CSA member for three years, I personally witnessed more than 80 days that the farm struggled to combat the floodwaters of Ian. It disrupted food production for a number of months. This was food that I counted on to feed my family. I care deeply about how our decisions about development impact flooding patterns and people's lives here in Volusia County. The Wildlife Corridor gives water much-needed space to be absorbed and protects the farming and ranching practices that have been a vital part of Florida's economy for generations. Folks, am I getting near the end?
You are near, you are at the.
I am, I'm sorry.
And you did a great job.
Anyway, but I highly support the efforts, and I think it enhances the quality of all our lives very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Steve?
My name is Steve Tangis. I'm also a member of the Deland Quaker Worship Group and of the Faith Organization, in case you hadn't noticed. Last fall, we heard dozens of stories in our congregations of members whose homes flooded during Hurricane Ian. Many had struggled with flooding issues for years. Our members who live in manufactured home parks were especially hard-hit and found themselves facing expensive repairs at the same time their lot rents were skyrocketing. The cost of homeowners insurance has doubled and tripled for some of our members in recent years due to flooding problems. We believe that anything that you can do to support and preserve wetland will reduce flooding. And so today, I'm here to ask that you support the preservation of the Wildlife Corridor. Wildlife corridors are of special interest of mine because before I retired, I worked for our state DOT as an environmental scientist. There were several of us in the office, but I was lucky enough to be the one to advise our engineers as they were designing and building wildlife crossings on roads in our district, including the three wildlife bridges on I-4 between here and Daytona Beach, which I think were mentioned earlier. DOT, a transportation agency, spends millions of dollars on wildlife crossings because we had learned from the resource agencies that the public benefits provided by natural lands are multiplied by linking them together in a corridor. As you heard earlier, one of those benefits is wildlife. Our native wildlife is a treasured part of living in Volusia County. Even though few in my congregation live in the more rural parts of our county, many are seeing more animals in their yards because the natural places where they lived are being destroyed. But as I mentioned in the beginning, it's just as important for addressing our flooding problems that we preserve the green space and protect the wetlands in those corridors. Over our two years of research on this issue, local and national experts have reiterated to our committee the importance of preserving land in its natural state to give water room to recharge, and the crucial role wetlands play in stormwater management and water quality. Everywhere we drive, we see another lot clear-cut and graded for another strip mall or apartment complex. If we're going to get serious about improving our flooding situation, we need to not only be diligent about the preservation of green space, but also provide incentives for developers to keep trees and use native vegetation to absorb more water. We need to bring our design into the 21st century with measures like rain gardens and permeable surfaces in parking lots. We appreciate the work we've already begun with Dr. Wendy Anderson of Volusia County Soil and Water and our county council chair, Jeff Brower, toward improving our stormwater management. We look forward to meeting with each of you in the coming months to discuss what face research you all can do to help us with this flooding. Thank you.
Thank you. Familiar name, Patricia Northee.
First of all, I want to thank you all for serving our county. It's a tough job, and decisions are not easily made. As you know, I have had recent brain surgeries, and I'm grateful that while the tumor was benign, it has touched me with a little bit of a disability. My mouth doesn't always work with my brain, so I write my comments down, and sometimes I have a little bit of a lisp, so please understand. Back in 2012, when I was sitting up there where you are now, I had the opportunity to meet the founders of the Wildlife Corridor. Those were the days before the rest of the world recognized or understood the importance of what these guys did in bringing awareness to Florida and the importance of the Wildlife Corridor. This picture you are looking at was taken in our county's very own Longleaf Preserve where the guys spent one of three nights in Volusia. Pictured are Elam Stoffus, Joe Guthrie, Carlton Ward, and me. They were the founders of the Wildlife Corridor, and this was the 2012 expedition that resulted in the Florida Wildlife Corridor Expedition film in 2012. in the Florida Wildlife Corridor Expedition film in 2013. My good friend and early environmental hero to Volusia County and the state, former Volusia County Councilmember Clay Henderson, spent three days and 27 miles with these guys as they trek through Volusia County on their way to Ocala and the forest. And this, by the way, was before the animal underpasses were completed along I-4. The expedition had to cross interstate for where traffic was in biased speeds more likely than 70 miles an hour. While in Volusia County, they came to Deep Creek, Lefice Ranch, and of course, where I met up with them, Longleaf Preserve. There is no doubt that the work of the Wildlife Corridor mirrors that, what we were doing through Volusia Forever and the Volusia Conservation Corridor. We have always been an active participant with the corridor, and I urge you to continue to keep the relationship healthy. As the Chair of Volusia, Echo, and Forever, our voters reauthorized both these programs with overwhelming support. Volusia Forever polled at 75%, and Echo at 72%. That was a message from your constituents to honor the work of these programs and to continue it. It was also an honor to participate at some small level in 2012 with the expedition. We have always been friends. Let's continue that long and happy relationship as we move to the next decade of environmental and land stewardship. And if there are projects we can partner on, let's do it. We all benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. It's good to see you here. Thank you for coming. Yeah. Oh, boy. Jason, thank you very much for coming. You know, this council has been known to debate items for a couple hours, and when I asked you to come, I had seen you before. I knew, and we've talked about time, I knew you were very capable of giving a good presentation in 15 minutes, and then we would have time for this question, and we did. It's, the comments you just heard from the public really just highlights what I wanted to say, is that this is a very important issue to the people that we represent. Ms. Norley just said 75% of people voted for Volusia Forever. We know it's important to them, so it's important to us, it's important to me, it's important for the wildlife that we'd rather see in their natural environment instead of dead alongside the road. It's important to our tourist industry to keep, and economic development, to keep Florida beautiful. It does attract people here, and it's also very important, as the people from Faith have mentioned, that you can probably make this your parting comment, if you have anything to say about it, but I have noticed, as we look at the corridor, that a lot of the wetlands are, that's where they're located, and an expansion of the corridor helps us capture more of those wetlands that will help mitigate the flooding that we see around the county. So thank you for driving three hours for a 15-minute presentation, and we hope to see you again. Thank you for your hard work and your successful work, and I appreciate it.
It's my pleasure. Happy to be of service whenever I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Thank you to the public that came out. We don't need a motion or a second for this. We just give you our gratitude. And that, 1139, that brings us to item nine, Ordinance 2023-29, Ordinance Amending Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances to Remove the Decommissioned Bob Lee Flight Strip from the Airport Protection Overlay Zone. Go ahead, Clay Irvin.
Good morning, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Before you today, is relatively quick and easy amendment to our zoning. We have an airport protection overlay. The Bob Lee Airport has been decommissioned by the FAA. They are no longer going to be a functioning airport. That will result in a reduction in the amount of area that is identified in the airport overlay. These are maps that are currently in your agenda packet on pages nine-nine and nine-ten. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Vice Chair Robbins.
I was going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Danny Robbins, second by David Santiago. Comments? Danny Robbins? Nope. No comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Well done, Clay. Item 10, Ordinance Number 2023-27, Ordinance Amending Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances to Allow for an Administrative Variance Process and Fee Resolution. Clay Irvin.
Yes, sir. This is a recommendation following up on your goal-setting session where you identified a need for expediency and efficiency. Staff looked at the amount of variances that were being processed through the PLDRC, identified a methodology, did an analysis of existing codes with our sister cities in the county, identified a process where we could do some of these administratively. Just to clarify, this is applicable only to single-family. It has to be a minimum 5,000-square-foot lot, minimum width 50 feet. It's a maximum 10% on a side yard. There was a question, does this apply to height? If you read through it, it is not specifically called out as being prohibited, but when you read through and see that it's only applicable to side yard dimensional or fence height, it is clear to staff that it is not. If the council feels that we need to make sure that's even more clear, we can add that to some section of it, but what it would do is, it would reduce greatly the number of cases going to the PLDRC. As such, we are seeing a reduction in the fee that would be charged. It's roughly half of what we would currently charge, so we see this as a method to assist those folks seeking a variance that is not of significant matters. There's any questions for us? Staff is available.
Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to staff and those that are listening because this is exactly what we ask for as a council. How do you remove barriers and unnecessary, what many would call government bureaucracy, right, and making the processes for average, everyday citizens to make requests, to make their changes on their property? With that, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by David Santiago and a second by Troy Kent and a question or comment from Danny Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. Clay, just one thing, going out on a limb here, is special exceptions covered in this, where you guys can handle those, or is that like under a variance, where you can handle those administratively, or is that, can that be brought up later?
The special exception is a separate application that we're working on currently because it does apply to all 51 of our zoning categories, and there's multiple special exceptions identified. It's taking a little bit more time.
Cool, thanks.
Clay, just a question back to the height that you mentioned, this doesn't cover height at all.
No, sir.
What's our current restriction on height of residential?
For single-family, it's typically 35 feet.
And does this change that in any way?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions, I'll call for the vote to approve this ordinance amendment. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And amendment is passed five to zero. That brings us to item 11, Ordinance Number 2023-23, Ordinance Amending the Comprehensive Plan Affordable Housing Policies. Clay Irvin.
Once again, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. The amendments you see in front of you are incorporated in response to the documents that were approved last July 19th pertaining to affordable housing. Volusia County initiated a three-year process where we drilled down on what was necessary to assist with providing for affordable housing in Volusia County. There were identified some barriers that incorporated some recommended changes to both our comprehensive plan and our land development regulations. In order to make the changes in the land development regulations, we have to first amend the comprehensive plan. So what you see here are changes to multiple elements of your comprehensive plan. Primary focus is helping to reduce the cost by allowing for some waivers of impact fees, something very similar that you've already proved recently with Habitat for Humanity, and then also allowing for deviations from minimum standards in order to accommodate reductions in cost for the site development itself, as well as an expedited review. These are all wrapped into a variety of different policies. Once these are approved, if the county council recommends transmittal, we will send them to the Department of Commerce. Upon state review, we would then adopt these and then start working on the implementation via the zoning and land development regulations. If there's any questions, this also is coming to you with a recommendation of approval from your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. That was a six-o vote.
Vice Chair Danny Robbins.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Danny Robbins, second by David Santiago. Any other discussion? We do have two members of the public that wish to speak on this item. Wayland Neese? You've been waiting all morning.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for having me here today as the chairman of the Volusia County Affordable Housing Committee. I just have a couple of things that I'd like to do in support of this, a couple of things I'd like to say in support of this. After we had our summit in December of 2021, in which the AHAC officers chaired various affinity groups, the LDR, the Land Development Regulation Affinity Group, we reviewed the zoning and land development regulations and the processes therein, and came up with a plan for affordable housing development. On June 22, 2022, AHAC approved the Path Forward Strategies for Success, the Five-Year Plan, which included the recommendations made by the LDR group, the Land Development Regulation Affinity Group. At the June 27, 2023 meeting, so just about a month ago, AHAC asked staff for a letter of support to be reviewed and voted on at our next meeting so that we could show that support of the comprehensive plan revisions. At our next meeting in September 13, on September 13, 2023, it's anticipated that we will approve a letter of support that will be provided during the second hearing for the ordinance in October, and we look forward to getting that approved in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Deltona City Commissioner Dana McCool. What'd I say?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Good evening, council members. I wanted to bring, in fact, talking about this particular amending the comp plan here, I want us to remember this, okay? SB 102 was a developer's dream written coming down, and when we talk about the Live Local Act, when we talk about affordable housing, I want us to remember what affordable housing means. It means that once we build these paper-thin cardboard-cut-out apartments or homes as they are, getting by on minimum standards that we're getting by, let's talk about how affordable it is then at that juncture for a regular, everyday working person to pay a $400-$500 electric bill because of the standards, right, in the homes. When we start talking about taking away also a local municipality's ability to govern how they want to see development in their town, it's really lackluster. I'm disappointed with League of Cities, I'm disappointed with the way we, as a county, have tackled it and talked about it, how we're protecting our cities, and there'll be more talk coming up here, at least with three or four other commissioners that have reached out to me regarding how upset they are and what we're doing with SB 102. So I want us to be cognizant of that as we're moving through, that it's truly affordable for people by perhaps looking at what your building standards are, when we're talking about what we demand from our development agreements or what we find acceptable with our development agreements, and we're going to push this off as affordable housing. I want it to be affordable to the people actually after they move in. So I'm asking you to work with staff and talk about these development agreements. Are we dedicating part of the property to solar? Are we dedicating double-pane windows? What are we doing to enhance and improve what's going to be passed through as affordable housing coming through? Because a lot of times, affordable housing means that developers still profiting off of that. When they come in here and they build these mass homes, now they have a lot more flexibility to do that, but in terms of what the standards are for the people actually moving in, I want us to tackle it from a legislative standpoint also and protect the people that are actually moving in here. So as we move forward, please, please remember why we're doing affordable housing to begin with, so that these people can live and maintain a quality of life in these areas. Do not accept the stuff that's going to be coming through to you just simply because of SB 102. Talk to your staff and understand what the ramifications are of not thinking about these smaller things, especially traffic and especially school capacity. I want us to be talking about these things. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? And we have a motion on the floor to approve and transmit to the Department of Economic Opportunity for Expedited Review in the Volusia Growth Management Commission for Certification. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. It's not even noon yet. Item 12, Resolution of Proposed Vacation of a Portion of an Eight-Foot Utility Easement with Seabridge South Subdivision.
Good morning, Tad Caysbeer, County Engineer. This is a requested vacation from Jeff and Gail Davis to vacate an eight-foot planted utility drainage and maintenance easement along the side and rear portions of their lots, consistent with the exhibits in your staff report. Approximately 720 square feet. There were no objections from any of the neighbors or the utilities. Staff recommends a.
Vice Chair Robbins.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Matt Reinhardt?
Second.
Or the second? Any questions? Comment? David Santiago.
Just want to let you know that Clay's on your tail here, catching up to your style, so good job.
All in favor of the proposed vacation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vacation proceeds five to zero. Item 13 is a requested change to beach vessel exclusion zone. And Mark Swanson.
Good afternoon, council, staff. Mark Swanson, Director of Public Protection. At the April 4th council meeting, directions were given to schedule an agenda item for to discuss the possible changes for the county's beach vessel exclusionary zone. So we're here today for that. This, of course, will require an ordinance change. Currently, there's a separation between swimmers and bathers at 300 feet from the shoreline and boaters at 1,500 feet from the shoreline. If the ordinance was changed to 750 feet for the fishermen, as was done for the advertisement boat, then there would still be a respectable distance between the two groups. So of course, this will have to be enforced by some type of law enforcement if this violates.
Okay. David Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How far does, I guess, most swimmers go out?
We keep them inside that 300-yard mark. The lifeguards will actually blow their whistle, wave their flags if they start to get further than that.
Okay, all right, that's what you mean by it'll still have a good distance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One of the things that came up yesterday was the pier, the, I think we have one pier left. How long is a pier? Daytona Beach Pier?
That changes, so I can't give you a measurement on that pier. It's inside 300 feet at this point.
Okay. This doesn't, no issues with the pier with this change?
None that I could see.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Matt Reinhardt.
Second.
Second by Danny Robbins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair, I think there was some public comment.
There are two public comments, I'm sorry. Austin Campbell?
Good morning, guys. This is the first Volusia County meeting I've ever attended, so this is a pretty neat experience for me, but I'm a charter captain up Ponce Inlet, and the 1,500-foot boat rule basically just hinders us from targeting the tarpon that get on the beach. There's big jacks, stuff like that. There's big jacks, stuff like that, and there's tons of baits, bogies, all sorts of things. And our neighboring counties to the north and the south don't have a boat law at all. They can get right up to the beach and cast out their baits, fish there all day if they want, and they don't have any issues. You know, we have Mosquito Lagoon, which is coming back, which is great, but it's nowhere near its former glory, and, you know, the beaches pretty much are only viable fishery this time of year, especially, you know, during the rainy season and stuff. The lagoon's pretty much unfishable. You know, we get clients who call and say, hey, you know, we want to catch some tarpon, but we're like, well, we can't get close enough to the beach to fish for them. So they just go to Bovard or Flagler County and they spend money elsewhere, and it'd be nice to just keep and retain those clients here. That's all I got.
Well done, thank you. We don't bring you in off the water very much.
Good morning, guys. Thanks so much for discussing this today. As Captain Austin Campbell mentioned, as a fellow charter captain, I've been doing this for almost 20 years here in Volusia. We loved official lagoon, but we've all had to make changes as we add changes to our estuary to be still successful. Fishing in the inlet and nearshore fishery off the beach has been paramount to the changes we've had to make. So reducing this distance to a compromise of 750 feet would allow us to get close enough to access the fish that we need to and still make sure that we're plenty safe with all the swimmers as, you know, licensed Coast Guard captains for very qualified operate vessels, we're around swimmers at the Dog Beach and Despairing Island all the time. Safety's always paramount for us, and there'd be no difference in this instance in making sure that we keep both our clients and any beachgoers safe at the same time while being able to bring that business into Volusia County and make sure that we keep our fishery here at the levels we'd like it to be for any of our tourists and other people that want to come and visit us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, appreciate both of you coming in. Apparently, we voted the way you wanted us to. We have a series of appointments here. Item 14, one appointment to the Volusia Growth Management Commission. We need a, we have one nomination for appointment from the unincorporated area for a four-year term expiring June 30, 2027.
Any council member can make this nomination, but as you stated, they must reside in the unincorporated area.
Yes. We have one person qualified. Are they in the unincorporated area?
Correct, and he is an incumbent.
I don't know him, I don't know if anybody, Danny Robbins.
Councilmember Trent. I don't, this was District Four. Did you have anybody, or I can make this nomination? I don't want to step on anybody's toes. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the nomination for John Samuelson.
The second was made by David Santiago for the appointment of John Samuelson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And John is appointed five to zero. Item 15, two appointments to the Volusia County Industrial Development Authority, and the motion would be adoption of resolution appointing two members to the Industrial Development Authority for a four-year term expiring July 19, 2027.
Any council member can make either one of those nominations as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to appoint William Thompson and E. Bliss Jamison.
You're making two nominations?
And I'll second that.
I think we have two openings, right?
Yes.
Good job.
E. Bliss Jamison. And I'm just looking for him on here, William F. Thompson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointments are made five to zero, and now we have District One and District Three appointments. District One is not here today to the cultural council.
I do.
Does this need to come from District Three?
Correct.
I'd like to nominate Nancy Maddox.
Robbins nominates Nancy Maddox. Second by David Santiago. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Nancy Maddox is appointed five to zero. And item 17 is an appointment to the Library Advisory Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a nomination for District Two, Marjorie Johnson.
District Two, Marjorie Johnson, made by Matt Reinhardt. Marjorie's not here today.
I know, it's unusual.
She usually comes. And the second was, was that you, David Santiago?
Yes, sir.
We need seven nominations?
Do we want to vote on this one first, or?
We could probably vote for them all together.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Kristi Jefferson to District Five.
Second that. And actually, we can probably just second them all at the end, can't we?
Yes.
Probably the way we want to do it, so I'll withdraw that second. And for District Four, I will nominate Patsy Franklin.
And for District Three, I'll nominate Donald Needham.
And Mr. Kent, tell me your nomination again.
Patsy Franklin.
Patsy Franklin, okay.
I may more need.
I would nominate Paul Richardson. He's in District One, but I can nominate from anywhere in the county. Paul Richardson, who is a steadfast attendee. One, two, three, four, five.
You still need two.
Mr. Johansson and Mr. Jimsey are not here, so they would need to postpone their appointment.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve all of those that were presented before us this afternoon.
Marjorie Johnson, Kristi Jefferson, Donald Needham, Patsy Franklin, and Paul Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointments are made five to zero, with two more to come at a future council meeting. Okay, and I was just informed that lunch is ready, and I think it, I know I could use a break. Danny, did you have a comment before we break?
No, sir.
Then we will break for lunch. It's 12:05 to, let's say, 12:45. And then we just have comments to wrap up, and public comments.
This is Volusia Today, a public information radio program brought to you by the County of Volusia.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Volusia Today. I'm Clayton Jackson, along with the Volusia County Community Formation Division. Thank you so much for tuning in this morning. Volusia Today is made possible by our sponsors, the Daytona Beach International Airport, the Ocean Center, Volusia Recycles, and Votran Public Transportation. Today, I'm joined by Heather Beldon. Heather is one of our division's marketing specialists and, might I say, an expert in the world of social media. So good morning, Heather.
Good morning.
So how are things going with you?
Very good, gearing up for Father's Day weekend. We've got a lot of awesome dads in our lives, so we have a lot of fun things planned, and happy early Father's Day to you, Clayton.
Well, I appreciate that. So, yeah, we're very excited. My wife hasn't filled me in on any details of what we're doing, so on Mother's Day, I make the kids keep it a secret what we're going to do, so maybe she's returning the favor for that. But Lauren, if you're listening, you know, one of those Blackstone grills or even an automatic pool cleaner, I've had my eyes on those for a while.
Hit, hit.
Hit just a few hints out there. So, well, today, we are joined by some people from our Beach Safety Division. We have Deputy Chief Tammy Malfers and Captain A.J. Miller. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, guys.
So, summer is in full force, school's been out for a few weeks, and there's no shortage of travelers to our wonderful community and our beaches. So with all the travelers coming over the last few weeks, the Beach Safety Division, you all have been extremely busy, especially with rip current safety and all that. So over the last few weeks, tell us about what have you all experienced out on the ocean?
Yeah, I mean, we've had, we've had some really rough waters. Normally, this time of year, the water's flat as it is right now, and it's calm, but we've had some really rough waters, some bigger surf, and you talked about the amount of people coming in. It shows, I mean, up until last night, from the start of the year, we've had, we pulled 1,202 bathers out of the water.
Twelve?
1,202.
Is that typical, or is that a little bit high? You know, it just depends on the weather. You know, we've had years that have been higher than that. You know, Memorial Day weekend, a few years ago, we rescued about 500 people out of the water just in the weekend alone. So it is, it is a little higher than average for right now, but we've seen those numbers before, and so we're, and we are, we're seeing a lot of people travel to the beach.
Yeah, and if you look at it, Memorial Weekend alone, we had 302 bathers we pulled out, and just from Memorial Weekend till now, we're at 643. So you can definitely tell we have more people coming in now as the summer's here and schools are out.
So they see the beautiful weather on the beach, say, hey, it's a sunny day, it's hot, I'm just going to take a dip in the ocean, and that's when, a couple weeks ago, when the rip currents were bad, that is very deceiving, isn't it?
Yeah, we had, we had really rough water during Memorial Weekend, and now going into a little bit of flatter water, there's still, there's a misconception that the water's calm, it's very inviting, kind of, we call it Lake Atlantic, but there's still potential dangers out there. We still do have rip currents, even though the water's flat, so there's still things to watch out for.
What percentage of rescues are rip currents and what, you know, what does that look like? Rip currents, there's about 80% of all water rescues are contributed to rip currents, and that's around the country.
So, well, obviously, we were talking about rip currents, how dangerous they are, and like you said, most, most of the water rescues that you all conduct are rip current related. But tell our listeners out there, what are some other reasons that lifeguards would have to initiate a rescue and go into the water?
So there's some other things, we were kind of chatting about earlier, and we were talking with Heather last week about this. One of the big things we're dealing with now is our west winds. That means they're blowing from the shore out into the water, especially with this flatter water, it's very inviting. People have their, they bring their pool floats out, their boogie boards, their stand-up paddle boards, and they're not really, really focusing on the wind, and as they're out there playing, that wind's slowly pushing them out, or they're like, man, I'm really flying as I'm going out into sea paddling as fast as I can, and they turn around and they have difficulty coming back in because of that wind. So that's, if they're far enough out with the paddle boards, that's where we usually launch a jet ski, or the floats, our lifeguards will go out and get them. Another thing we have is, in our county, we have two jet, or two piers and two jetties. With that, we do have oftentimes a lateral current, which means the current's flowing along the shoreline. Well, people don't realize they go out a little too close, or maybe they just drift down as they're playing in the water, and they encounter those piers and those jetties, and especially this time of year, we have staff at those structures to try and avoid the bathers getting entrapped with those, with those structures, or to be there just to help them if they get in trouble.
And like you said, with that lateral current, people really need to be aware of that because they, they take, you know, children, or they're in the water, and they don't realize that, next thing they know, they're a half mile down the beach, and that's how people kind of get lost and lose, you know, sight of their family members and stuff like that, so just be aware of that as well.
And what do you do when you get lost? You go find that big red lifeguard tower, that red lifeguard truck driving down the beach, and we're going to reunite you with your family.
Perfect, perfect. So what about medical episodes? Like, there are people, like dehydration, or like, what? Because I have heard that lifeguards feel like there's no rip current, nothing like that, but then somebody experiences.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That's why it's so important to swim in front of those staff lifeguard towers, because anything could happen, right? We have people that actually have seizures or medical episodes out in the water, and they have to be rescued, so it's so important to be in front of those lifeguards, even if you don't think the rip currents are strong that day. Now, we know everyone listening has downloaded the Volusia Beaches app, and we know they're familiar with our social media channels. What are some other ways you guys are doing this messaging to warn people about some of the dangers and some of the things they need to look out for when they go in the ocean?
So one of the, one of the biggest things that started last year is actually a joint effort with the Florida Beach Patrol Chiefs Association, and they've actually got a grant funded by, you ever seen the Endless Summer license plates?
I have, yes.
So that's a foundation, that money actually goes back to lifeguards. It started up in Jacksonville. So the Florida Beach Patrol Chiefs Association was able to tap into that, and throughout the state, we have 23 billboards, big blue billboards that say swim near a lifeguard. There's 23 of those through all the major interstates, and there's also eight electronic baggage claims in the major airports. So we're trying to, trying to hammer people as they're coming into the state, they're driving to the beach, they see those billboards, they get off the airplane, they see swim near a lifeguard, oh, what's that? There's a website on there, they can do a little more information on it. And then we've got some other things we do locally.
Oh, yeah, we do a lot of things. We do a lot of PR events, we do media, a lot of media inquiries and stuff like that on camera with all the media outlets all the time. So, you know, in our beach app, you know, make sure you get, download that beach app. And tell your family and friends that are coming into town, hey, just download this on your phone, it gives you so much information, and, you know, you'll have it right there with you on the beach. Yeah, absolutely, and download that beach app, look at it before you come to the beach. Yeah, absolutely. And download that beach app, look at it before you come to the beach for the day. It has all kinds of great information and most importantly, it's where those staff lifeguard towers are.
One of the coolest things that I noticed about the beach app, which I knew we had this online on the website, but those beach cams are on the beach app as well, so I don't have to be at a computer to look at them. And you're looking at live, real-time snapshot of what the beach looks like, so I can see, hey, is the area I go to normally really crowded today? How's the tide looking? Is it all the way up to that seawall?
Yeah, absolutely. It has so much great information. It will let, you know, you can find out if the beach access ramps are open or closed. Like you said, the tide conditions, um, where the off-beach parking is, just all kinds of great information.
Alright, so, define this for me. We keep putting the message there, swim, swim near a staff lifeguard tower. What would that definition of swim actually be? What if I'm just out, uh, you know, I'm just a little bit below six foot, never quite made it there? What if I wait out there in about waist-deep water? Is, am I in danger of being swept away by rip current or you caught in one?
Absolutely, um, absolutely. Uh, we tell people if there's not a lifeguard, don't go in the water, period, okay? Because, um, you can be in the water, a wave can, uh, you know, sweep you off your feet, and next thing you know, you lose your footing and you're in a rip current. So, even if you go in waist-deep water, um, you make sure you're in front of those staff lifeguard towers.
Yeah, and we, when we rescue people, we talk about people in the water as far as our profession, we call them bathers. Um, it's gonna sound weird to say bathe in front of a lifeguard, so we say swim in front of a lifeguard, different definitions. Um, but, but like Deputy Chief Malfers said, one of the, one of the biggest, biggest causes of, of people getting caught in these rip current conditions, especially when we have surf is, you may be in waist-deep water and we consider that swimming. Uh, when the wave rolls through, what do you do when a wave rolls through? You jump up and let the wave pick you up, right? Well, even if you're at the edge of the rip current, the wave comes, picks you up, carries you out a little bit, puts you back on the sand. Every time that wave picks you up, it pushes you a little bit further out until you can't touch and that's when people panic. But, they downloaded the Volusia Beaches app, they're swimming in front of a lifeguard and we go out there and help them.
Alright, cause some people might think, well, swimming means I have to go out far enough in the ocean till my feet no longer touch. But, that's not the, that's not the case. So, just to let everybody know that. So, we'll switch gears a little bit to, um, other potential hazards in the water, like jellyfish. Have you all, has there been many jellyfish stings?
Um, over the last few days, we've had some jellyfish stings, um, you know, and they're just, there's no real time of year. They're just at the mercy of the wind and the currents. So, um, we will, if we are seeing an influx of jellyfish or man o' war, we'll fly that purple flag. So, that's on the beach app as well. Uh, so, uh, and also the lifeguard can, uh, let you know if, if, you know, when you go to the beach and you're in front of that staff lifeguard tower, talk to that lifeguard and they'll let you know, uh, what the dangers are out there for the day.
What do I do if I get stung by a jellyfish?
Uh, first off, go to that staff lifeguard tower, cause they're gonna have vinegar. You can bring your own vinegar if you want. Um, what that do, that, it, it, when you get stung, it leaves something called a nomadesis on your skin. Um, so, they can still fire off the toxin into your system. So, the, the last thing you wanna do, that you say, oh, you can rub sand on it. Well, all that does is break everything up, especially if you have tentacles and it's gonna hurt worse. Um, so, we put, we put vinegar on it, it's gonna fire everything off at once and the pain's gonna subside faster. Uh, a couple of things to watch for, um, if anyone's allergic to bee stings or ant bites, kinda the same toxin, so you may have an allergic reaction due to that. Um, things to watch for as far as that is if you have maybe tightness of, of the chest, breathing, maybe hives around your neck or the top of your chest. That may cause for, for further medical, uh, treatment.
That is excellent information, cause I did not know that, cause I have many friends who are allergic to bee stings, but they, wow. So, the jellyfish, like they're, they could have an allergic reaction if they get stung by jellyfish, saying they were like a wasp or bee.
And that's one of the first questions we ask when we're, when we're assessing them medically, is are you allergic to, to, to bee or ant stings?
I did not know that.
What if they're, uh, along the shore? Can you step on them or can you get stung by stepping on them?
They can still sting you. So, don't pick them up and put them back in the water.
Okay, good to know. I've always wondered.
Some people do that, um, they, you know, but no, they, they can still sting you when they're on shore, so just stay away from them if you see them.
And my question, cause I do like going to the beach and I see, um, when a jellyfish has washed up, um, to the sand, I see little kids burying it, like putting sand over it. Is that a smart idea or not? What would y'all recommend?
It's never smart. Um, I, when I was young, we had a bunch of man o' war on the beach and I thought it'd be cool to take a little periwinkle shell and, and pop the bag on top and I ended up getting stung and it hurt like the dickens. Um, so, we always advise staying away from it. Those jellyfish are more than 90-plus percent water, so as the sun dries them up, they're gonna just kinda dissolve into the sand.
So, people do need to be wary when they're walking on the beach to, you know, watch where they're going.
Yeah, just avoid them.
Don't try to kid, don't try to nudge them back in the water with your feet, right? Alright, with that, we're gonna take a quick commercial ba, break. Stay with us and we'll be right back.
We are Volusia County Beach Safety.
We're here to serve Volusia County's 47 miles of unique coastline. You know Volusia County beaches. Yeah, those beaches. But also these beaches. We have millions of visitors every year and we work around the clock to keep our beaches safe and beautiful.
And you can help.
Swim near a staff lifeguard tower.
Pick up your trash. And fill holes.
Identify, avoid, and escape rip currents.
Please leave the beach cleaner than you found it.
Look out for one another and keep an eye on kids, especially near the traffic lane and in the water.
Cats are allowed at our two pet-friendly beaches. Lighthouse Point Park and Smyrna Dunes Park.
If you see something, say something.
A clean and safe beach guarantees fun in the sun for everyone. Thank you for doing your part to keep Volusia County beaches beautiful.
See you at the beach.
Make the most of your day at the beach. Download the Volusia County Beaches app today. Sign up for real-time notifications on vehicle ramp openings and closings. Find staff lifeguard towers. Get updates on tides and beach conditions. Plus, off-beach parking and coastal parks info. Volusia County Beaches app is available for your smart devices at the App Store and Google Play.
We're back. I'm Heather Beldon along with Clayton Jackson and you're listening to Volusia Today, a public information program brought to you by the county of Volusia. And joining us today are Tammy Malfers and A.J. Miller there with the Volusia County Beach Safety. So, um, I like night swimming, but absolutely only in a pool. You will not catch me in the ocean. While some people may think that that's a little bit spontaneous and adventurous, but what is your message to those people?
Uh, don't, don't swim in the ocean.
Very buoyant folks.
Don't swim in the ocean if there's not a lifeguard on duty, period. Um, don't go in the water. Um, you know, our lifeguards, uh, part-time lifeguards go off-duty, the towers go off-duty at 6:00 PM. Uh, so, don't come to the beach in the afternoon after that and expect to go in the water. Um, that's when, you know, drownings happen. Um, and at night, we can't see you either, so it's, it's extremely dangerous to go in the ocean at night.
Alright, so, we're gonna kinda switch gears a little bit. We've been talking a lot about the water. So, now let's shift our focus more on the sand. And what is, what is our county known for across the, the nation? That's beach driving. So, um, y'all are out there every day. Tell our listeners, what are some common mistakes people make when they decide to drive on our beach?
They don't pay attention. A lot of, you know, people come down on the beach, um, they're driving, they're looking at the water, they're looking at everything around them except for the traffic lane. Um, so, please, you know, pay attention, um, put your driver's side window down so you can hear what's going on. Um, put your headlights on so you're visible to the public. There's a lot of children on the beach. It's pretty much the public's playground. So, uh, pay attention when you're driving on the beach. Speed limit is 10 miles an hour, it's strictly enforced. Uh, you know, drive at a very low speed and, um, you know, pay attention.
And I could see where, like, a lot of people, maybe this is the first time they've ever been to the beach and they're awestruck. They're just driving, so they're looking left, looking right at everything. And, you know, texting's probably not as big of a deal on the beach, cause they're just struck by the beauty of what they see out there.
I think you hit, you said, looking left, looking right. A lot of them are just looking east towards the water. Uh, and that's a big thing. We have that parking area on the west side of the traffic lane. And a lot of people like to hang out in that area in front or behind their vehicle. You can't lay out between your vehicles because of that safety hazard. If someone's gonna try and pull in, they may not see you. Um, so, a lot of people are awestruck by the beauty of the ocean and they're only looking left. They're not paying attention forward or, or to the, to the west where a lot of people are trying to cross. Um, and it, it can happen fast where, and they may not be paying attention driving, but also the people on the beach, if they're not used to a driving beach, they're not paying, paying attention to the vehicles that are going up and down. So, you may have two people that aren't paying attention to what's going on in their surroundings and that's when we have incidents.
Yeah, I mean, every time we're there, I'm telling my kids, this is a road, this is not the beach. We need to look left, look right. We're holding hands when there's cars in the area. I think another thing I see a lot too is like soft sand and people getting stuck. Sometimes the traffic lanes are a little soft and sometimes the parking spaces, it can get really soft. What's your advice there?
So, I don't know if we've mentioned this before, but we do have an app for the Volusia Beaches that you can download. Um, and, and what it is, is with those approaches, it'll tell you the four-wheel drive areas only. Um, and that is our predominantly soft sand areas. And the big thing is, be careful, go slow. Um, there are some techniques to be able to park into the soft sand to make it easier to leave. Uh, but the bigger thing is if it looks too soft and, and your car starts to shutter or bounce, just let off the gas a little bit, keep going forward, uh, until you find hard-packed sand. If you get stuck, please don't stand there and, and jam on the gas to spin your tires, it's only gonna make it worse. Go to that red lifeguard tower, go to that red lifeguard truck and we're gonna assist you, we're gonna be able to pull you out of the sand and get you on your way.
Yeah, a lot of times when you come down on the beach, you know, you can talk to that toll taker also. And they'll let you know if, what areas are four-wheel drive only, if there are areas that, when you come down on the beach. And they'll let you know, uh, which way to go. Uh, so, make sure you talk to that, uh, toll taker as well and find out those areas.
And, and we'll have signs along the beaches you're driving down if you're encountering soft sand soon. Um, it's not a suggestion, it is a four-wheel drive area only, so safely turn around and head back into the, and stay in the, the hard-packed sand.
Alright, and just as another little public service announcement, you all did talk about turning the headlights on when they're driving down the beach. When you do find that perfect spot to post up for the day, make sure to turn your headlights off. Cause you don't wanna drain the battery and then you go to leave and it's like, uh-oh, like I'm not going anywhere.
That is extremely common.
Oh, that's common.
The benefit of that is it's another service we provide, is all our trucks have jumper cables in them, so flag down that big red lifeguard truck and we'll.
Another service? I did not know you all did that, but they, that's, that is wonderful information. So, maybe even some of our local residents don't know this, but explain to me what those big poles are that people are parking.
Conservation poles.
So, they're not parking poles?
No, well, you have to make sure you're on the east side, the water side of those poles, um, because, uh, you know, we, they put those poles up, they have to be there for us to be able to drive on the beach, um, for the turtles to nest. Um, and it builds up the dune systems and stuff like that. So, it's important when you come to the beach, pay attention to those poles and those signs. Make sure you park, you know, on, uh, east of those poles and, um, pay attention to that. Don't double park. And also, uh, like Captain Miller said, uh, do not lay in between the vehicles. Uh, either set up your belongings on, behind your vehicle or in front of your vehicle, but not in between the vehicles. It can be dangerous and it is a, a county ordinance violation as well.
Yeah, and we, we've also got the massive poles which identify our natural beach management area. Um, no vehicles allowed in there at all. We've got a couple throughout the county. Um, and all this stuff is driven by data and statistics, cause those natural beach man, management areas throughout history, that's the predominance of our sea turtle nests in those areas. So, they keep driving out of there completely. And also, like Deputy Chief Malfers said, um, up along the seawall, the dune area, the sea turtles have a tendency to lay their nest closer to the, the toe of those dunes. So, that's why we have that 15 feet in the urban areas off the seawall of the dune line or 30 feet in the natural areas.
And I'll make our environmental management team very happy by throwing this in there, is if you do see the sea turtle nest marked off, just observe it. You can take pictures, but don't go fiddle with it. Like, that, that's nature taking its course right there. So, uh, Ginger, I'm hoping you're smiling right now, cause I did wanna plug that in for you.
Well, we, we do have one quick thing I wanted to add is that we open the beach every morning at 8:00 AM in the internal nesting season. Um, sometimes that is delayed because we have turtle surveyors that go out on the beach and look for new nests. Um, so, just cause we're supposed to, just, just give us some time, sometimes if we have a lot of nests, they get tied up. So, we can't open the beach until the turtle surveyors have gone through and cleared that area of, of nesting sea turtles. So, sometimes we're delayed a little bit, but it's, it's, it's for a good cause.
But you can see on the Volusia Beaches app, right? If your access is open yet, so, if, you know, just keep an eye on the app, you're, you know, if you have some time, go grab a coffee before you head to the beach and you'll be ready to go in no time.
I like it.
So, I have young kids. I've got a four-year-old and a two-year-old, um, and we go to the beach as much as we can. Um, what advice do you have for me or maybe my, if my parents take them or anybody else who's traveling to the beach with kids this summer?
Absolutely Heather. Um, if you bring small children to the beach, you can opt for many areas of our beach are no driving and you can find that on the beach app. Uh, but if you do bring, uh, small children to the beach where there is driving, um, it is extremely important to hold their hand whenever they cross that traffic lane. Uh, also, another tip is set up all your belongings, your, your stuff that you're gonna need for the day, your tent, your coolers, your chairs, everything you're going to need on the water side of the traffic lane. That way, uh, you, the children will have no reason to travel back and forth across those traffic lanes.
What about shade structures? Should I bring a tent? Are there places where I can find some shade?
Uh, I, I would suggest bringing a tent, uh, you know, cause, you know, in the summertime, it gets really hot out there. A lot of people, you know, get dehydrated and drink plenty of water, bring shade. Uh, but make sure you take that tent home with you. You can't leave it up overnight.
Now, I have seen people's tents fly away. You know, I know they come with some anchors sometimes, but are there easier ways to anchor it or a best practice for anchoring it?
I would suggest tying it to your cooler, uh, you know, and, and something heavy. Uh, cooler is always a great option, uh, cause usually it's full of, you know, water and juice and ice. So, um, yeah, I would definitely suggest tying it to a cooler, tying it down, because even though the winds are calm, sometimes we get those, um, gusts that come through and, you know, that's what happens with those tents. They fly away and they could hurt somebody or damage, uh, they've damaged vehicles and stuff like that.
And you mentioned take it with you and that actually made me think of another thing that environmental management has is the mermaid's lost treasure boxes. So, um, some of our beaches have these boxes where people can bring toys that they find or toys that they don't want to take back with them. And it's just, it's just so cool what a little community we have here that everyone's kind of looking out for everyone else and.
Yeah, those are, those are nice for the children.
Well, we got the Fourth of July coming up here in a couple of weeks. And it's actually on a Tuesday this year, so we can probably hypothesize that a lot of people are gonna take off Monday too. So, our beaches are a potential kind of four-day extravaganza.
I took Friday off too, so.
Oh, have I? This is our notice right now.
Kevin approved it.
I'll have to check in chronos.
So, five days.
Five days for Heather. So, what are y'all expecting, uh, in a couple of weeks?
Well, you know, with Fourth of July brings, uh, very large crowds to the beach, so we're expecting very large crowds. Uh, so, make sure you download that beach app, find out where, you know, those tides, what will be happening that weekend, swim in front of those staff lifeguard towers. And, uh, if we wanna talk about fireworks, uh, fireworks, uh, although they are legal in the state on certain holidays, they are, uh, not legal on the beach at all at any time.
And regardless of what your crazy uncle thinks, the professional fireworks are just always that much better.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Stick to those, don't bring your own, um, especially the, the amount of, of debris that's left on the beach the next day. With Fourth, Fourth of July evening, even though it's a holiday, we still close the beach to vehicles at 7:00 PM. You have to be off by 7:00. Um, so, so be aware of that. We, we'll keep extra staff on, um, because we, we know we're gonna have bigger crowds, but we will still be pushing vehicles off at 7:00 PM.
And I love that you mentioned the 7:00 PM. I have gotten a ticket in the summer because I thought it was sunset, but it is 7:00 PM during the summer.
Outside of turtle nesting season, November to, to, to May, it is sunrise to sunset during turtle nesting season, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Good to know.
Alright, before we take a quick break, just wanna reiterate real quick, no fireworks on the beach. Alright, stay with us, we'll be right back.
We are Volusia County Beach Safety.
We're here to serve Volusia County's 47 miles of unique coastline. You know Volusia County beaches. Yeah, those beaches. But also these beaches. We have millions of visitors every year and we work around the clock to keep our beaches safe and beautiful.
And you can help.
Swim near a staff lifeguard tower.
Pick up your trash. And fill holes.
Identify, avoid, and escape rip currents.
Please leave the beach cleaner than you found it.
Look out for one another and keep an eye on kids, especially near the traffic lane and in the water.
Cats are allowed at our two pet-friendly beaches. Lighthouse Point Park and Smyrna Dunes Park.
If you see something, say something.
A clean and safe beach guarantees fun in the sun for everyone. Thank you for doing your part to keep Volusia County beaches beautiful.
See you at the beach.
Make the most of your day at the beach. Download the Volusia County Beaches app today. Sign up for real-time notifications on vehicle ramp openings and closings. Find staff lifeguard towers. Get updates on tides and beach conditions. Plus, off-beach parking and coastal parks info. info. Volusia County Beaches app is available for your smart devices at the App Store and Google Play.
We are back with Volusia today, and real quick, guys, tell us about a competition that's coming up here in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so we've got a relay lifeguard competition on June 30th, it's at 2:00 PM at the Harvey Beach Approach. We've got seven six-person teams from around the state of lifeguards coming to showcase their skills and how awesome they are.
All right, with that, we're going to wrap up. Thank you so much for listening, and have a wonderful weekend, Volusia County.
If you have a comment about Volusia today, or if there is a topic you would like to hear featured, please contact Volusia County Community Information at 1-866-345-0345.
Welcome to the Volusia County Council meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes.
Okay, if everybody wants to find a seat, we'll get started in just a minute. Okay, it's 12:47. Why don't we, why don't we wind up this meeting? We have public comments and then staff and council comments. So we will start with public comments. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. Couple of things. One, I want to clarify, when I was talking about agricultural land, I wasn't talking about buying it, it was developmental rights to them, because somebody asked me about that. Secondly, with regard to bashing Chip Wood, this is like the third meeting in a row, I don't need to justify what he's done. We all know his shortcomings. We know he's a Yankee, he can't do much about that. His horrible language, he admits to using the word scumbag. Other than that, I really can't say anything bad about him, and I know he's coming up for elections, and you're going to hear a lot of people bashing him, but I hope there's some kind of a, the vulgarism that we had earlier doesn't continue, okay? And last, the firefighters, I have no idea what that was about. I don't, I don't, I'm not on the internet, so I don't know what it's about. I'm presuming it has something to do with the ambulances and not being able to get into the hospitals. We went through that with Heather Post four, five years ago. We bought ambulances, we did as much as we can as a county, from what I understand, they get them there, but they can't get them admitted. There's no beds. We can't do anything about that either. If that's what they're referring to, could we clarify that, please, for the public? I don't think we're, we're in a position to rectify that, it's the hospital's obligation. And lastly, read several articles, and I understand, I've made comments about we have to be aware of water shortages that's coming down the pike. Staff says, oh, no, we've got plenty of water. Everybody thinks they have plenty of water until they don't. Las Vegas, swimming pools, fountains, the whole nine yards, and now they're almost out. So I don't want us to go through anything like that. This issue is energy. I'm going through like 40 magazines of National Geographic, I love that magazine. So I'm reading from 2020 to the present, and they had the windmills, and the concept is that it will be expensive over time, but eventually it will equal to oil. Well, they're at that point now. We have a shelf that goes out forever. You could put windmills out there. Do we want to do that? How far out can we go and not see them, because we don't want our tourists looking at a bunch of windmills? Win-win, loss-win. So we can't put them out there if it's going to be damaged, that's why we don't want the oil wells. There's also nuclear generators that they now have, that are little tiny ones. They're the size that fit on ocean liners, submarines, et cetera, that two or three of them would do the entire county. I would like us to look at that. And lastly, landfill. Burning our rubbish to produce energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Just under the wire. And I don't see the other speaker here, Dana McCool. I know that, I know that Dana, fighting cancer, she's up and down when she can, when she can speak, so I wish her the best. That takes us, that ends public comment. So we'll go to the county manager.
Yes, sir. Just two quick things. Just a shout-out to Robert Gilmore, our Director of Fleet. He was just recently recognized at the Florida Association of Counties by the Florida Sheriff's Association. He's been a member of their Fleet Advisory Board, and he's helped them develop specifications for vehicles and equipment for the past 14 years. So he's given some recognition for that. And I also want to report some good news. You know, we recently, and some of you were at the ribbon cutting two weeks ago down in Deltona for our veterans' office at the library, and that is off to a good start. We've seen 48 clients, and they've actually filed 47 claims. So we're averaging eight clients per day for the one council that we have down there, and that's exceeded our expectations as to what would be going down there. So some good news about expanding our services out there. And that's all I have.
Mike Dyer.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
We're breaking records here. That brings us to the county council comments, and so we'll begin with Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman, and my comments will be very brief this afternoon. As well, Mr. Reckonwald to Robert Gilmore, why am I not surprised? You know, I mean, great guy, he's in the right position, excuse me, and, you know, getting recognized for the great hard work that he does, along with his very competent staff. So please share those words with him as well next time you see him.
John, I've got to tell you, the two things you mentioned were two things I was going to mention, my last two things. The issue that we heard about as far as the social media, I have not seen it. So while I was listening to it, I thought, well, ignorance is bliss. I mean, it was, you know, I'm not looking it up when I leave here. I thought, you know, I'm probably better for not, not hearing any of it, quite honestly, and let George kind of sort it out, and then give us a report, and let us know what's going on. And my last comment is, Mr. Dyer, not today, not right now, but at some point, I would like for you to share with this council what our tools are to stop the absolute nonsense of bad, erratic, possibly dangerous behavior that unfortunately showed itself at the beginning of our meeting. To hear the mother of all curse words yelled out when there are women and children in these chambers is wildly inappropriate. To have those listening online be subjected to that is also wildly inappropriate. And I've had enough of this individual talking about our sheriff, and I believe purposely uses the wrong syllable when he says his name every time he comes up here. It's not okay. And I had a constituent about a month ago pick up the phone and call me and said, "Mr. Kent, I listen to these meetings online, and I am disgusted that nothing has been done about this. I heard it three times in one day." And I said to this woman, "I wasn't sure, it sounded like it, but I wasn't sure." And she said, "I'm sure. I sit at home and I listen to it, and it's not okay." There's a freedom of speech thing here that we're not stopping, but no one should be subjected... Well, first of all, all comments go to the chairman. Well, first of all, all comments go to the chairman, period. But no one should be subjected to not following the rules that this council has put forward to run our meetings. And that is you have three minutes and when your three minutes are up, please stop talking. And, you know, you're done when you're not, when you don't stop talking and you get called out on it, to start cursing out, you know, the members of this council, it's, it's not okay. So, Mr. Dyer, I'd like to have you at some point let us know, you know, what tools we have because we want to hear from everybody. And even if it's things that we don't agree with, that's okay. That's part of this. That's part of freedom of speech and it's part of your right and ability to come here. But you can't come here and use language like that. I wouldn't allow it with my wife and children out in public. And I'm certainly not going to allow it for my residents here in Volusia County as well. I just think it's, it's inappropriate. And I'm sorry it happened. You know, it's a shame. It's a shame that some people are like that. Thank you.
Let me, let me piggyback on that a second, Michael. I would like to, when you do that, to consider two things you might know right now. We have always said that when somebody comes, you can speak to any subject. Can we limit it to Volusia County business? And number two, when someone does that, what are the steps that need to be taken to ban them from public speaking in our chamber?
Sure. I'd be happy to speak to that if you want in the general response. You have addressed that in your ordinance, provides for a warning mechanism. And then the person could be removed from the chambers. Your public input, so you have really three opportunities, three general opportunities for public input. You have at the beginning of the meeting, then the meeting, and for each agenda item. The way your ordinance is written is that public comments at the beginning and around the meeting should be addressing an issue that the council could act on, which does require some interpretation at times. If someone may be speaking generally on a law enforcement issue, well, you do, you are connected to law enforcement in some way. But if somebody came in and it was something that the council does not deal with at all, you could take it. There's been a lot of litigation on the subject of meeting rules, First Amendment issue. Be happy to follow up. You do have some tools in place and I'd be glad.
Vice Chair Robbins. Thanks, Chair. Mr. Dyer, in this public setting, would disorderly conduct if the deputies warranted, would any of those apply in this public setting or trespassing after warning? If he tells them to leave, we go out, go ahead and help him leave? And then register trespass warning to kind of put him on notice that he's not allowed back for a certain amount of time?
The challenge with trespass in this context is a public has a right to participate in your meetings. And so whereas we would have a stronger hand at trespassing somebody, maybe another part of this building, the conduct, there are a lot of restrictions on us on the general rule is to not trespass somebody that would at least be able to come and speak to their like.
I understand that. There's other ways to speak to your elected representatives. Can you find us what exceptions there is to further protect, protect us and protect the integrity of the meetings? And also to, if there's a disruption, just like there's, when you're doing an investigation out on the street as a police officer and somebody's hindering that investigation or hindering a public meeting and taking you away from the purpose of the meeting or the action out on the street, disorderly conduct applies out there. Can you research if that also applies inside?
Yeah, you do. The general rule is in a tenure ordinance. And then the First Amendment lawsuits have been brought is, is somebody raising a substantial disruption? If they are presenting a substantial disruption, you can eject that person. If they're not, temporarily that is, if they're not raising a substantial disruption, general rule is should not take action against that person. Where people have pushed the envelope in litigation is people using profanity. Profanity itself has been deemed protected, threats, biting words, or not. And so it does, I'd be glad to go back on that. I know council in the last few years did adopt the meeting rules that we do have today. Can go through those and talk about any possible options. I would just say though, I'd be remiss in not saying is generally the cases you've seen that have gone to court have been litigated involves somebody that really has pushed the envelope. And from your perspective, you're trying to have an orderly meeting. You have different people in the audience that you feel that should have the benefit of being able to watch a public meeting. And you may have somebody that you believe is being inappropriate. The First Amendment does protect some aspects of being inappropriate.
It does. So are you telling us right now that coming in here and dropping the F-bomb in front of everybody in here, including the kids that were in here today, is protected and that's okay and that's allowed in here?
It has to be a substantial disruption. So if somebody got up, I think one of the.
I would say that's a substantial disruption personally.
The way he did it this morning was, he wasn't, he wasn't going to leave at first.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying in all cases, but it depends on how you say it, what accompanies those words. I can't give you a broad line rule on that.
And if, so it's a judgment call?
Yeah, if that comes up, we can, we can, we can vote on it and then.
What I heard was you had somebody come and then was yelling when you were trying to call him to order. That, I think arguably is a disruption. If somebody got up and very quietly said, "profanity", courts more likely are not going to deem that to be a substantial disruption.
Right.
So that's kind of.
Well, on the one hand, you know, we have another speaker, Paul Richardson, who almost always speaks on national issues that we can't do anything about, but he's very respectful. And I'd hate to eliminate his First Amendment right to do that. But, so I think the way to handle it is probably what you said, that's make a judgment when somebody does that. I mean, he was, it was obvious that he was going to become belligerent. And fortunately, I think all the deputies were outside, but fortunately one came in quick. And, and that usually does send people out the opposite door.
I mean, some of the things that courts have looked at is somebody raising her voice. Maybe that's accompanied with profanity as a disruption when you're trying to call them to order. That's really just the way the case law has evolved on it. But I'd be happy to follow up because I think this is a longer discussion.
Yeah, it is. It's difficult because the First Amendment was to, not to protect speech that we like, but to protect speech that we don't necessarily even want to hear. But there are public standards for a public meeting like this and it was definitely trespassed. So, okay, you were done, Mr. Kent? Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. I'll get away from that. Could you answer the questions I had about that? As many know that I chair the TDLCB, the Transportation with a Disadvantage. One of the members of that board has brought it to my attention that October 15th of this year will be National White Kane Safety Day. Of course, that's been celebrated since the 1960s. They had some ideas that they wanted to kind of incorporate with the county. So I'll be, as I hear more, I'll be bringing that forth. I think it's an important issue that, and it does bring more awareness to it. On a fun note, Chair, I think you went to as well, the World War II armor facility over in Ormond, or, I'm sorry, Osteen. It's an educational outfit if you haven't had the opportunity to educate the public on US armor tactics and equipment that was used during World War II. And I didn't know what to expect when I went there. They also perform reenactments at different places in the country. I know that they have reached out to county manager at one point. But then COVID happened, so that kind of put everything on the back burner to possibly do something here in Volusia. I don't know if we can look into exploring that possibility because I found it extremely informative. I know that they don't do one-on-one type tours. I think it has to be because of the nature of the exhibits themselves, that they have to have a large group setting. So I thought maybe we could have them bring it to us at some, some venture. And then lastly, the, everyone's obviously heard about the Transform 386 project. Just a reminder that the end of the community surveys, I believe, is Friday. So if the public that's listening, if they make sure that they would get involved in that as much as possible, we have another meeting scheduled in District Two at the Daytona Beach Regional Library from 5:00 to 6:30. I went to one last night at the Port Orange Library. Donna Butler does an extremely good job. It's, she explains it to them as the people are coming. I guess some of the people were anticipating a, Clayton, we saw you there too. Some of the people were anticipating a lecture of some sort. It's not for that purpose. It's more of obtaining information. And then also because when we first started talking about the possibility of these funds, when I had the conversation with Mr. Reckonwald months ago, a big area of concern for me is the midtown area and how much damage that they sustained as a result of those storms. So Donna has agreed to do another meeting for the Midtown Neighborhood Watch Meeting on Monday, August 14th. So I'm looking forward to hopefully answering some questions for those folks as well. And other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. David, I'll make this quick as promised. Two things, something that I've been exploring. One of the things I brought up during our goal-setting sessions was looking at ordinances like the rest of y'all to free up residents and the working class, our workforce. This includes where I'm going with this, our over-the-road truckers, landscapers, plumbers, electricians, HVAC pool maintenance, equipment operators, anything that depends on certain tools for their trade to earn a living and put food on the table. Two ordinances that I would like to send to staff to look at, to give us options. Also let marinate with the council over the next few weeks is 72-287 prohibits the parking of your truck or tractor or cab or chassis truck on your property. And Section 72-1310 prohibits parking and storage of a vehicle, shelter, watercraft, trailer, et cetera. You know, real quick, because I know I'm probably going to get lambasted for suggesting this. No, I do not want our unincorporated areas or residential areas in our unincorporated county turning into a junkyard. There's statutes for that, correction ordinances for that, 72-2, 72-293, which prohibits a lot of that stuff. And there's, there's measures in place. I'm just looking for options for these folks that either own a business with decals, they use decals on their trucks or a lawn and garden trailer, to be able to keep that on their property to, because right now they're paying or have the fear of government, you know, to ticket them or to remove it off their property. I'd rather see them keep that money in their pocket. So if we can explore some options to maybe loosen up these restrictions and let them keep one, you know, one or something like that, I'd love to talk, talk to you guys about it. Other than that, we're good. Thanks.
Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things I got, I think Mike wanted me to bring up again, the discussion on the resolution consensus for the fentanyl and possibly border stuff to Congress. Did you want me to make a motion on that or you just want to clear consensus?
Either is fine.
If there's consensus, consensus, there we go. Okay, thank you. And the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, I had was for the board, I'm on the Seventh Judicial Court Board that meets over in Benel. I wanted to bring it up so that we can appoint a staffer to it. It's, it's the norm from what I've learned that their staff that's appointed to that. I participated in the last meeting and I felt that it's probably more appropriate to be at that. So if there, unless there's any objection, I'd like to bring that back and staff recommend and appointee for that board. Okay, that's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I do have a couple of things. First, just to kind of, um, to clear up some things, or one thing this morning, Mr. Santiago, you brought up the speakers only having five minutes to speak and I didn't, I was not purposely breaking any rule. I don't know of a rule that, that limited guest speakers or any speaker. I know that we have asked staff to make their presentations brief, which, which they have done. And we actually did a really good job of this morning. I mean, here it is 111 and we're almost done. So I asked the county attorney, I said, is there a, did we set a rule that I'm not remembering? And he said, we discussed it, but did not make a rule. I hope that we, I think we're doing a much better job in the case of an invited guest speaker, especially one that comes in from three hours or wherever they come. Even if they zoomed in, I would hope that we wouldn't limit him to, to five minutes. So I just wanted to clear that up, that it wasn't a planned attempt to, to break a rule. You can respond to that.
I didn't think it was a plan to want to break the rule. I didn't feel that. And I think in my comments, I honestly said the reason why I felt that I needed to make sure or he got out of anything that was pertinent. He was very well versed in his knowledge of the product. But I felt that he was telling, I'll be quite honest, I thought he was telling a lot of stories. And then, and I did not want him to lose any valuable time to give the real purpose of what I think he was here for, was to give us some specifics around Volusia. That's the only reason. Just that was a guidance, not a specific call out.
Okay. Thank you. Two other things that are, that are both important. And I've, I had a very productive meeting yesterday with senior county staff and then Kevin Captain, the new director of emergency services. And I wanted to, I wanted to bring that forward. As you recall, the last meeting, I asked for a workshop, which did not get passed. And I don't blame you for not passing it because I was purposely vague in the reasons for doing it. And now you can probably see the, the reason. I knew that there was some, not a mutiny, but some very emotional responses just under the surface that I was trying to buy time on and get them to trust the council to, to deal with concerns. And so now that's more out in the open. And I believe this morning, Mr. Judd, after speaking with Mr. Judd after, well, I'm, I'm not calling you, but you could, you can come up because you and Kevin might both want to be involved in this. I think in talking with Kevin yesterday, he's six weeks on the job in a, in a large and complicated division and a very important division. There's not a single council member that doesn't want this county to be as safe as possible. I, I don't have any question about that. The, and I think, Kevin, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I think the way that you and I left it is that you would welcome the opportunity to have a broader discussion with council, with staff about things that affect EMS. I would like to, for you to have time to be able to say, this is what I've learned and this is what I've found and these are my recommendations. That's only fair to you. Mr. Judd told me this morning the same thing and that it's in fact already under, under works. I believe that you will, there will be that discussion. And I want our EMS people to know that, that they are respected and that their concerns are heard. I've, I've had a lot of discussion for, for three years now with members. I had a daughter-in-law that was on our staff as EMS. It's hard work and sometimes they don't feel respected. And I think that they have, I hope they're letting you know the reasons why they feel that way. And they've certainly let, let me know. But one of the big concerns. But one of the big concerns that I want to get on the table now so that you know my concern, and I've shared it with the county manager and, and, and seen all the senior staff yesterday, is that when I talk to EMS, they, I think your words and one of your first presentation to us is that we have lost sixteen paramedics and five EMTs. We have those vacancies. The EMS people, the ones that are in the front seat of, of those ambulances for twelve hours, know that we're looking at new ways to recruit people and doing our best to bring people in. I think the disconnect is that they want, they want us to focus on because they feel the biggest need is not on recruiting, but just in retaining people, getting people to quit going out the, the back door faster than we can get them in the front door. And the reason that they say that that is happening, and I think the thing that we really need to, we need to debate it. And George needs to hear the will of this council guided by the expertise that you two men bring in your discussions with EMS people. And, and that is the whole discussion of, of a dynamic versus a static versus a hybrid system and how that affects response times. Because that's the most important thing. How quickly do you get somebody that, that needs an ambulance? And the, the response times, you know, you can look at it two ways. We need to, if you have people on this dynamic system where they're sitting on a street corner for twelve hours a day in, in an ambulance, and it's hurting morale and they quit, the response times are still going to, are going to go down. They're going to plunge because then we don't have enough people and we're moving ambulances around to, to cover for them. So I, I would, I really want to see that discussion. And, and George, you know, I talked with you about it yesterday. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but I, I would like to be involved in, in that because it's, I look at our job as primarily giving you directions on, on, on how this county is, is run, the direction that we're going. And I can't do that without the right information. I don't, I'm not suggesting, and I have not gone around you to, to your employees and made remarks about the way the county is handling them because I, you and I and Suzanne have discussed this for two years. I know your feelings, I know where, what the goals are you're trying to accomplish and where your heart is. But it's not working for the EMS employees right now. And they, I think their concerns need to be heard. I, I hope you're hearing them from the EMS employees. And you're doing a good job. Am I correct in what I understood you both to say, that there will be a, are you talking about a workshop or a private discussion or?
Good afternoon, councilmembers, Jim Judge, Emergency Services Directors. There's a lot of dialogue going on with our Emergency Medical Services staff. Kevin has what he calls huddles, where we're routinely meeting with the staff to get their input, to find out what's the good, bad, the ugly. And you know, let me start off by saying that, you know, just in a recent Fire Chiefs meeting about a week ago with Chief King, Chief Albert, Kevin in attendance, that the chiefs even said, the collaboration, the cooperation between the municipalities, between County Fire, EMS has never been better. So we have an EMS system. As a part of that system is Emergency Medical Services. It's County Fire. It's our municipalities all working together. And then together, looking at the data, looking at the response criteria, but then also our posting locations. We have added Station Forty-Six out in Glenwood, where it was a move we made out of eighty-two in Deland. It actually turned out to be a better location for us. Also Station Thirteen up in the Ormond Beach area, excellent location. Talking with Jim Corbett, we have enough funding for about four to five more of these locations. Now we're just trying to work on finding what is the best location for them. So working with Suzanne, working with George, working with Janine Jennings, looking at those locations so that you're not going to a street corner or under an oak tree somewhere, that we're going from a facility to a facility as we wait for those next calls. And it is a busy service. We continue to do everything we know to do to retain, recruit, but then also even as we've learned in conferences, raise our own from our ambulance support technicians, getting them to EMT school, getting our EMTs to paramedic school, and even providing the funding to get them out of paramedic school and on the road. Unfortunately, there's a nursing shortage, tremendous nursing shortage. So what have they done? They're going after our paramedics. I think we've had close to ten medics in the last few months that have all gone to work for hospitals. And Kevin has even reached out to them and say, hey, what about part-time? You know, what about inner, you know, part-time or other positions that we have intermittent? And hey, by the way, if you don't like that hospital job, we'd love to have you back. So we've reached out to the staff to make sure that we're also doing exit interviews. What are we doing right? What can we do better? And then even this morning, you know, there's been some, some mudslinging, you know, quite honestly, between Fire and EMS and social media. I met with Jeremy Kariginis this morning. We've got a meeting already set up for the fourteenth. But also with, with Jeremy, myself, with Kevin, with Joe, to, to get Jeremy's ideas. He's got some good ideas and, and there were some things that happened some, quite some time ago that were unfortunate and we can look at those and may, maybe make some of those corrections. But then also with a meeting with Liz Payne, with the EMS Union, with Lenny Wheeler from the EMS Union, also with Jeremy and his folks to sit down, to work together. Everybody's agreed to stop the social media campaign out here against each other. We're all, everybody's on board with that. We want to work together. You know, it's, it's a great service, it's a great system. You know, a dynamic deployment is, you know, is what it is. It works well because you lose that shoot time. But we want to be able to have them have a good place to go instead of under that oak tree at, in front of Winn-Dixie. So again, we've added to, of course, you know, with the council's approval, we've got a brand new EMS main facility that we'll be working on. That's going to be a huge push in the right direction. But then adding these other four to five units. So again, a posting location is just that, not under an oak tree at a Winn-Dixie, but a good location to go to get out of the weather, have a meal, clean up. And so that's all a work in progress. Kevin's been on board for a while. I've been on board in this position now for a short time. But I have a great deal of experience in Emergency Medical Services. I think oftentimes I'm seen as the emergency management guy. But I've been involved in EMS at a very high level, both at the state and national levels. I've served on state committees, national committees, and continue to monitor and keep up with the trends and issues that, that involve EMS. And you know, the paramedic shortage is not unique to Volusia County, the state of Florida. If you go to the International or the National Association of EMTs, they just published an article about people doing exactly what we're doing. They're adding basic life support because there, it's a stopgap until we can get more medics in the system. People aren't registering for paramedic school like they used to. But then also the American Ambulance Association, National EMS Chiefs Association, I could go on and on. Everyone's struggling because of the paramedic shortage. So we need to get out there. We do have a recruiter in EMS, which has been a big help, working with all the paramedic facilities, working with the school system to encourage young men and women to possibly look at this as a career path, because it is a career path. And it is a wonderful opportunity. And there's a lot of benefits, high-risk retirement, you know, you get to go out and really make a difference in the world. But I know I've talked a little bit, let me pause and see if you have any questions for me.
We, we, there's a couple of councilmembers that want to ask a question. When we're done this, I would like to give the county manager the opportunity to wrap it up, but just something that you said, I, I've heard twice now from you, and maybe I missed something on social media, but I didn't take it as the firefighters and EMS battling. I think the firefighters are lifting up their, their brothers and sisters in the field and the ambulance because it affects them so much. You know, what I hear is what we're rating twenty minutes with a guy screaming from a, a broken leg. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I hear. And it wasn't, it wasn't an insult to the EMS. It was, it was a concern about the way that we're deploying. I think when we did Station, is it fourteen in Ormond by the Sea Fire Station, a previous council made sure we got a, an ambulance there to solve response times. It was a problem. And so we put in an ambulance there. And now what they tell me is that that ambulance is, is moved out because there's a shortage of staffed ambulances. And so it puts a strain on the system. We discussed that yesterday. And Suzanne is getting, I asked for information on, on response times. Can we get that information? And she's, she will have that. This is one of the, but so I don't, I certainly don't want to fuel an argument between EMS and firefighters. I don't think it's, I don't think that's what the issue is. I think they work together and they depend on each other.
But we want to make it better. You know, there have been some, and I've shown, I've seen some, some things that weren't positive. So we want to work together to, you know, to address any issues that are out there and also response times. You know, if there's a, somebody says it's going to take twenty, thirty minutes potentially to a drowning victim, we take issue with that because we don't see that in the data. We just don't see, there's always going to be an outlier. I've been the EMS director, I ran Lake Sumter EMS for many years, equal to or even not larger than Volusia County EMS. Indian River was the EMS director down there along with emergency management. There are going to be days when you get more calls in about an hour than you have resources to send. But then that's why with the system we have, with the closest unit response, with our municipalities, with our County Fire, with our EMS, and what we call stop the clock. So when you look at a six to seven minute timeframe for the first paramedic unit arriving on that scene to provide that lifesaving care is pretty much the standard. And I know Suzanne's got some data that really speaks to that on just how well we're doing with that response information and stop the clock with that advanced life support. And of course, we've got commonality with medical direction, commonality with protocols. We're working on combined training with all Fire and EMS together. That's coming up. We've got a big program coming up in October, the tenth and eleventh. And a gentleman I've had the pleasure to work with, Tim Phelan, he teaches twelve lead K G across the nation and has for many years. He's got about a dozen books out there about it. So Tim's an old friend, invited him to come in. He works for Stryker, no charge to the county. So he's going to do two days of comprehensive twelve lead training. But then we've also had our, our system status control, working with Marvelous come in to do training. But that's also an equal position. So we're actually looking to add a second position in there, utilizing some of the staffing resources we have to have an emergency medical technician in there along with that battalion chief to manage the board, to be able to help with the interfacility transfers, but then also keeping an eye on the board as we move units around the county.
It sounds like you're dealing with, with their main concern as well, which is the tension between dynamic and static and hybrid. Where does that go? I know one, one of my frustrations is that the previous council, of which I was a part of, approved these six workstations and the funding for it, and I think we have two now. I want to see them all in place and they want to see them all in place. I think that, that will go a long ways to making their workday a lot more enjoyable, less stressful. I mean, we're expecting them to fill out all their paperwork on a laptop on their lap in the front seat of an ambulance. It's, there's a lot of stress there. David Santiago.
Thanks, Chairman. Just two things. I don't want to completely go down the rabbit hole right now, but I'll just briefly say when I moved to Florida thirty years, thirty-one years ago, I lived in Long Island before that, and I was a volunteer on the ambulance EMT. Actually, I wasn't a certified EMT at the time when I moved, but I did as a volunteer. I chose to serve my community at that capacity versus volunteering at the fire department. Reason I bring that up is because when I moved to Florida, one of the first things I did, I wanted to serve still my community and I went to my local fire department and I said, I want to volunteer. And I was shut down. And it, it's still, you know, and I, I love our firefighters, I love our fire department, but it just still amazes me that we have a system, and we can pursue this later, that doesn't allow people to volunteer. And still to this day, Long Island, my community is still a volunteer service with some paid administrative staff. And I'm not suggesting to do that, but I'm suggesting that if when times of need, you look at options, why wouldn't we allow and encourage people to volunteer in our services and then maybe move up the ranks and become permanent employees in the future when we train them? So I, Jim, I don't want to go down there now because we'll be here for another three hours. But I, I wanted to preface that and maybe we can talk about that in the future. And but, but more importantly, Mr. Chair, we started this conversation and just a few minutes ago, and I was a little bit, I think we should, we got to get back on the rails here. And what I mean by that, Mr. Chair, I felt that, and I'm, I'm going to speak for you and you don't have to respond to this, but I felt uncomfortable for our two staffers that came down because I felt that, I think the comment, and I'm going to paraphrase, was like, you agreed that we should talk about this or something like that. And I respect the city, the county manager form of government that we have. It's a very, very muddy water or very fine line, right? I appreciate the latitude that George has given me as an individual council member to communicate with our staff. And I always take that with a very fine line from the perspective of I'm inquiring, but I always, if I have an issue, I always go back to that guy right there. Right? And so I felt uncomfortable for the two of you coming down and, and it felt like it would put them on the spot, Mr. Chair. I think, and I know you're gathering information, you're trying to do good, but I think it has to be very careful as to how we communicate with staff as the council and, and, and stick to the, our charter, right? Everything needs to go in my.
Wait, let me, let me relieve your concern because I did. The county manager set me up with an appointment with him. So it wasn't outside of his, he's the one that said, called Kevin into his office and would sit down with Jeff.
I appreciate that. Maybe you should have led with that and, because I took it a little bit different. You know, if you'd led with that, that would have been helpful for me from that perspective. But additionally, I just want to make sure that we stay out of the waters also of the any union issues that may be floating around because I still look back to him. My job is to hold him accountable, right? And if, and if we have a retention issue, we have a morale issue in any of the departments, I hold him accountable, right? And I say, George, what are you doing? What do you need from me, George, to make that environment better? What tools do you need? So it's just a very fine line, Mr. Chair. I think I know where you're going, but I just, let's not muddy those waters because I've seen it and it's, it's messy.
Well, we, we can't expect the county manager to be responsible for that if we haven't let him know. He, he acts on our direction and he, he wants that direction. So that's what I'm trying to give him. Danny Robbins.
Chair, do you have a, to put this to bed, do you have a policy change suggestion to give direction to?
No. What I have is I want these two men and the senior staff, and I, I think every one of the county council members should be in a workshop meeting to go through them so that the county manager knows what our direction. We, in the end, have to give him direction. How do we do that if we don't know what the information is and what the issues are?
Chair, respectfully, we ask questions. This isn't our first rodeo. We've been through this before. It actually came up a year ago or two years ago, every year at the same time during negotiations. But, but what I find troubling, it's not fair to the public, this is not fair to the staff, it's not fair to undermine our county staff to say it's not working, and it's a direct quote, Chair, from you, and then say you're doing a good job and that you can't get the information. That is highly untrue and it paints a terrible picture for our community. Let me remind you again, day-to-day operations, union negotiations and contract negotiations do not happen and should not happen on this dais or in the public. There's laws pertaining to that, period. End of story. This dog and pony show has to stop. If, if there's a policy recommendation or a change, sling the pistol and lay it on the table. Let's knock this stuff off. It's creating nothing but hysteria and, and creating problems just to solve it. And I'm going to tell you why. Simple research, Chair. We got a couple of minutes, if you care what VCMS is doing. There's surveys done, timeliness, response, seventy-five point nine percent say very satisfied. Keeping patient informed, seventy-six point four percent. Concerned and caring, seventy-eight percent. Managed conditions, seventy-nine point one percent. Professionalism, seventy-eight point six percent, very satisfied. All those are very satisfied. EMT and paramedic staffing relief positions were approved and funded this past year. Created two new EMS division chief roles to assist with operation and shift adjustments to be more intimate, you know, with our line workers. Conduct new higher orientation classes recurring every six weeks to better streamline and onboard experience, automatic dispatch of BLS ambulances to low acuity calls and coordination with the VSO Communication Center, so better communication for response times. With the implementation of a sergeant paramedic roles, they guide candidates through the hiring process to conduct interviews. to conduct interviews written and skills testing. We've developed a system status controller guidebook to provide guidance to the battalion chief, operate and dispatch communication center. We recently conducted training on Marvelous application as Mr. Judge had lightly touched on with Bradshaw Consulting Services. We conducted MCI management training and exercise with sergeant paramedics. We EMS command staff regularly works with VC EM with teaching both ICS G300 and G400 advanced classes. We participate in Daytona Beach International Airport triunal exercise for a mock plane crash. We've, uh, had mechanical ventilator training, long-term ventilator training with patients transferred between facilities. We've assigned an admin aide to focus on recruiting and navigating new candidates through the hiring process. We've developed a quarterly training schedule for EMT paramedic recertification. We've developed an online incident reporting system which was created that allows for crews to admit any issues in real time, which immediately notify the supervisor for a review report. We've added a new option to application process to allow paramedic students in their last semester to apply prior during graduation. Applicants complaint, uh, can complete a testing and pre-hire process in advance of graduation. We've assigned EMS program clinical agreements with area schools and universities to assist with recruiting efforts. Uh, at which time they do make frequent visits to schools. We're partnering with the Volusia County School District's Health and Science Academy. We're focused on growing paramedics. Currently, seven individuals are sponsored in the paramedic program at Daytona State College. The county council approved a three-year paramedic recruitment bonus, uh, to answer some of your, your questions for $4,500 in August of 2021 with nine paramedics receiving the sign-on bonus. Once again, addressing your concerns, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar increments. Uh, the initial amount, clearing amount, 18-month anniversary amount. The retention bonus was established while we were in office, uh, last council. Also, August of 2021 for $5,000 for paramedic and $2,000 for EMTs. Thirty-one EMTs have received both installments of their retention bonuses and 33 paramedics have received both installments of their retention bonuses. I'll make the last two pages quick. We have two new modular respite stations, Station 46 in North Deland, Station 13 in North Ormond. Last year, we also added a new crew station in downtown Dland. We continually evaluate additional respite station locations. Uh, we recently received county council approval to purchase a new location for EMS headquarters on there in Daytona Beach. We've continually collaborated with all the area hospitals, partners to limit EMS off-road delays. Uh, once again, addressing some of the concerns that we're hearing. As there is a direct correlation between increases in off-road delays and extended response times, local hospitals are also provisionally staffing EMS nurse to assist with the EMS offload process during peak times. We purchased 10 replacement ambulances last year, have 10 more replacement ambulances arriving this year. We've replaced a number of our patient charting laptops and are in the process of outfitting our ambulance with dual SIM PEP waves, which designed to minimize disruptions with vehicular internet connectivity. We've purchased and implemented a Stryker power load stretchers and Lucas CPR chest compression devices to provide positive feedback to our medics and hear their issues in place. We've implemented a patient satisfaction survey, demonstrates positively an appreciation for our patients, family members and the public about the care, expertise, compassion and life-saving that they all provide. We are working closely with Volusia Sheriff's Office. Communication Center is currently planning for an upgrade to their computer aid dispatch, which is their CAD system. We've recruited a part-time EMS medical director from Advent Health to assist with EMS medical direction and quality assurance activities. We've introduced a logistics manager who helps improve our operational efficiency through logistical operation and the expansion of operative IQ and radio frequency identification tags for inventory tracking, as well as our narcotics management in real time. We've integrated 10 new Opticon traffic control systems to increase the number of countywide intersections that provide emergency right-of-way for responding ambulances. We've conducted an EMS award ceremony recognizing many of the EMS battalion chiefs, paramedics, EMTs, ambulances, supply techs that are on the front lines of providing patient care and serving the citizens of Volusia County. One EMT and paramedic recognized by the West Volusia Chamber of Commerce for the response and caring for patients struck by a tree during Hurricane Nicole. We've conducted an exercise simulating the evacuation of a skilled nursing facility prior to hurricane with EMS command staff using the ICS system and planning process. The county council approved a three-year collective bargaining agreement on June 6th, 2023 with the International Association of EMTs, Paramedics, IAEP, uh, which expires September 30th, 2025. And we are currently coordinating a 12-lead electro-cardio diagram course for the fall of 2023, instructed by international expert Tim Fallon. With that being said, my motion is to let the county staff and the county manager do their job. We are going to stay out of day-to-day operations per the charter. And if there's information that you need to know, alls you have to do is ask and hit the enter key. Uh, if we have a second to let them do their job, I'd appreciate it. I don't want to hear this again. Thank you.
Well, that's fine. You don't, you don't control what I can say in my public comments and.
But this council can and we're fixing to take a vote on it because this is a dragon that's created just to be slayed.
This council can't vote on whether or not the chair gets to make a public comment or not. This is the most important thing we do, public safety. And you think, you call me putting on a dog and pony show with what you're doing now? I'm talking to the, to the two of the men that are in charge of this. I've already talked to the county manager, to the assistant county manager, to the county attorney and to Kevin Captain and the Jim Judge about the issues that, and I'm, I'm telling you that everything you just read was absolutely done, except for the workstations, they're still not there. But it's, that's not the problem with EMS employees. They're not complaining about pay. They're complaining about the working conditions of staying in their ambulance. And we need to deal with that if we want to keep the people. We need to let them have that conversation and they want to have it with us.
I will make a motion for you, lay a policy on the table.
I just did.
Lay it on the table and let them do their job. If not, you haven't, Jeff, and respectfully, you haven't.
The policy I want on the table is for us to have a workshop so that we can make a decision together. Not me making it for you.
That is not our role, Jeff.
It is our, it's absolutely our role to give the county manager and his staff direction. We have, we have, uh, work, workshops all the time together.
I'd like to call for the vote, please. Thank you.
There, there's no need for a vote. Um, George Ractonwall.
Respectfully, Chair, I will, um.
So you're, you're making a motion to shut up the county chair?
I will, Chair, this isn't a dictatorship.
It sounds like it.
Excuse me. There's a motion and a second on the floor. That's how this body works is by majority. Whether you agree with her or not, that's your problem.
What's your motion?
My motion, as repeated, Chrissy, can you go ahead and repeat my motion?
The only part of the motion that I have is to let staff do their, their job.
Correct. We're in current negotiations. Let staff do their job. They have a handle on this. We do not need to be involved in day-to-day issues per our charter. And I believe there's a second on the floor.
Okay. There's nobody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. And the reason is, is because there's nothing that I've said to keep staff from doing their job. I'm bringing staff information and appealing for the people that are in those ambulances at EMS. And I'm going to, um, George, I'm going to let you, well, before you go, Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that. So I was going to ask George if, if you would allow me to go before you, George. So thank you. So I am, um, I guess baffled a little bit, you know, because we do have a specific role here. And our role is to set policy and then George is to work within the parameters that we give him and Mike Dyer. The only two employees that we can call and tell what to do. Okay? Period. Those two only. And I, I'm, I'm going with this comment about muddying the waters a little bit. My concern is we have a public workshop and everything gets aired out right here. I've never experienced local government like that in my life. It is always the captains, the chiefs, they talk with the rank and file. They have meetings with our manager and our attorneys. They come to agreements or not. And then we have public meetings where they can come and talk about anything they want to talk about if they want to do that. They can call us individually and have conversations with us and tell us their side of the story. That can happen, but to, to bring, to have that in, in this public forum is not the appropriate way, in my opinion whatsoever, on how to negotiate. We need to give George parameters on where we are with salary, where we are with locations for our EMS personnel, how much we want to spend basically to make that happen. We give George those parameters. George can do that with us together in a, in a group. He can talk to us publicly. He can pick up the phone and talk to us individually about this. George can count to four. He knows by talking to us individually what his parameters are. But for, but for us to do that, Chairman, I just think that it's going down a rabbit hole that I'm not comfortable going down. I've, I've, I've never done that before. I would never recommend an elected body do that. I don't think it's the proper way to negotiate. It's not for one person to fix all of the problems by having a private conversation with some staff members. That's not the way this should happen.
Which is why I brought to the council and why I asked for a workshop because we can't give him direction if we don't know what the issues are.
So, and I, and I hear what you're saying and I can appreciate that you want to help solve the problem. But I think the wording of how, what you want to be discussed at the workshop, I would be way more comfortable with an attorney-client shade meeting where Mike Dyer and his team, who've worked with George, have had a conversation so that we can talk privately about where we are and what we want to offer our employees. That's something that definitely I think could happen if we need to get to that point. But George and I have not had that conversation yet. And George, if you ever need to have it, pick up the phone and call me. We'll sit down. We'll have coffee together or on the phone, whatever you want. And I'll tell you where I am with my comfort level. Um, and then from there, you may need to ask for a workshop, a public workshop or a shade meeting so that we can give you direction and really give you the parameters on where we feel comfortable. Because this is all coming down to a, a dollars and cents thing. If it's not salary there, anybody, somebody's not upset about, then it's, they need more locations. And that's dollars. That's going to cost money for that. That's what that is. So it's something I think we can solve. It's just the way of, of doing it. I'm very interested and I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Ractonwall, but I'm very interested in, in hearing on what you think as the county manager would be the best way to, um, eat this, eat this elephant.
Thank you. I'd be happy. Actually, it's, uh, I was getting ready to offer. First off, you've got two different dynamics going and we're mixing them. And that's a problem. You know, you mentioned it very well. Uh, in public protection in particular, you have a paramilitary, very, uh, uh, strong structure, chain of command, whatever you like to say. But there's a lot of leadership. And I just want to assure everybody, we meet on a very regular basis, uh, with the leadership. And we meet with the leadership of the fire departments that are affected because what makes, uh, EMS a little unique is it's a countywide service. So it's not just servicing, uh, the Volusia County Fire Department. It's, uh, all the citizens in the cities and in the county. So they have already a pretty big, uh, group that they have to try to work with. So that is the way you run a department or your division. You must run it through your leadership. Otherwise, there's no reason to have them because as soon as the people know that they can go around the leadership, then there's no, there's no reason for the leadership. So what we're getting confused is, you know, you, we have service unions in these areas and they're taking advantage of that and they're going around the leadership. They need to go through the leadership. A lot of what's been discussed, we've been discussing and will continue to discuss. But it does come down to dollars and cents in a lot of cases and/or legal, uh, issues, ordinances. There's a lot too things that sometimes, uh, the boots on the ground, which are out there hardworking, uh, is, and we do. We're very, very lucky for the quality of the people we have, but there's no way they would know all those factors. They have to work through the leadership that we have. And that's why I stress with our leadership all the time, get down in the field and educate, educate. They should know your budget. They should know why you get, where the money you get and why it is. And that's, I would say that to Road and Bridge, to, uh, the library, to any one of these areas. And that's the charge I give to my leadership team is to get out there and, and educate all the way down the line. Obviously, I think we need probably a little bit more work in these areas. These are the most challenging areas because they work 24/7. They're spread out all over the county. You know, it's hard to call them into one room and say, hey, it's a certain time, we're going to give a little lecture here on this or that. That's very difficult. So the challenge in fire and EMS is that. But we must take it on and we're doing it, as you just heard, a list of things, all the things we are doing. I gave EMS probably the best communicator we have in the county in leadership with our former communication director, uh, who also, they have the, uh, uh, experience of having run emergency rooms and been in EMS. So I was part of the team that brought EMS to Volusia County Government. So when it was the foundation. So that's been going on for over 10 years. So again, there's a lot of knowledge and Jim's not kidding. I mean, Jim's written a book on a lot of this stuff statewide. So you have experts in the field that are working these very complex problems. And it's evidenced by even the fact that they're, okay, so we are struggling with paramedics, as is everybody in the country. But I don't know if everyone in the country's got seven minutes response time average that we have. I don't think they have some of the stuff that we're, we're able to achieve here in this county. Uh, you mentioned about volunteers, you know, 70% of the landmass of this country, the greatest country on earth, is covered by volunteer firemen and volunteer, uh, EMS, not by professionals. So we're, again, in this county, we're very lucky. We're a county the size of a state and we, and we cover it with a professional staff. Uh, when the fires in 98, kind of a benchmark, uh, event in this county, uh, there was over 400 volunteer firemen at that time. Uh, I don't know, what do we have, like three today in Volusia County? So, uh, in fire stations, the ones that you had were mainly manned by volunteers or maybe one professional and several volunteers. We've upgraded that immensely. So all that has gone on in a, in a 25-year period, we've come a long way. And we have, as Jim said, more to go. We're constantly working on it. But really, it needs to be worked on in an orderly manner, not going around. It needs to be worked on. I've been available. I have had many a meal, um, with union leadership. I try to get down into the field, but even then I find out, which you see when the boss shows up, it's a different story. And I have to be able to, you know, listen to my leadership and then listen to, you know, the boots on the ground. And that's a sacred thing. You don't mess, you don't go tell on each other. You got to listen to both sides and you got to then work for consensus and work for mediation and work for a plan. And that's what you do. Uh, and that can only really be done, I think, in the professional manner that we have here. And it takes years to hone that, uh, skill. Uh, but that's what we are able to accomplish. Jim, like I say, I mean, the meeting's still going on and he's already arranged the meeting with the fire department. By the way, uh, he had already reached out to, uh, that person last week. So I don't know, there was a misstatement or something in there, but he had reached out because we talked about it. And, and again, because we are involved all the way down to, uh, the, uh, level, the, uh, organization where the work is happening. And so what I ask is going forward, let us handle it and we can come back and we will report to you. You know, what is going on and if I need some policy direction, because we are going to look at maybe some different models, that's where you guys would come in. If I come in and say, because more than likely any model change is going to require a funding change of some sort. May, and that's what we're going to have to look at. There are certain things we do today that maybe we can't do in the future or we do them differently. You guys recently voted on an ordinance change that allows us to bring in, uh, outside vendors, uh, that can do, uh, transport out of the county. Something we're trying to do to keep our equipment. Something we're trying to do, to keep our equipment, our people here in the county, because a lot of our hospitals send the people to Shands, or they send them to Jacksonville, or they send them down to Orlando. So, we're working on that right now, which will, again, bring more people back into, uh, the fold here. So, and we've come to you in the past, we've asked for these retention bonuses. Everything that was read there that had anything to do with money, you guys had to have passed. So, uh, you are involved heavily by those decisions that you're making on policy. Just so, now, the very next meeting, not for EMS, but, but, but for, we are in negotiations with the correction unit, and I'll be asking for an executive session at the next meeting, because I do need direction on, uh, where we're going to go, uh, in those negotiations. So, that's a good example there. And this one here, that's premature, because we're just really, uh, going to be going out and meeting with the, these people right now. So, I'll come, can come back and report that to you, and if it requires some sort of a, a change that you guys would need to vote on, we'll present it that way, either in a workshop or in a large item. It doesn't have to be a workshop. It can actually just be an item that we've set up.
Okay. Thank you for that. Just a couple of questions. Well, to clarify, to begin with, it sounds like you think I've, I'm running around the county soliciting EMS personnel.
I don't, no, I don't think that, Mr. Chair. I honestly don't.
Okay.
Again, it's a fine line, because the union definitely, uh, they are a group, they're allowed to talk to you, uh, as much as possible. I would hope that they would talk, uh, in general, uh, areas that maybe concern everybody, rather than the only, their self-interests. And I would just ask that if, if they are, and, and you certainly can listen, but I would ask that we be given the opportunity then to present the management view, uh, because there's a lot of common ground, but, uh, but I just, just caution everybody that, uh, I don't think you're soliciting it, but I do think that they, uh, would like to talk to you. So, and, and I know, not just the union, employees probably talk to you guys all the time, and that's fine. I, I welcome, uh, because I think we run a great op, a great place, but I know if there's a concern, there's usually just what I've learned walking around the halls, and, and learning, uh, and having worked in most of the departments in this county, that there's usually two or three sides to every issue, and, uh, you gotta know all three of them before you react.
Yeah, which is exactly the reason that I'm bringing it to you, and have brought it to you in, in private. You just said you don't want to hear policy information or ideas unless you ask for it. Is that what you said?
No, I did not say that. I just said, I was still responding to, I think, Mr. Kent's original question, how would I handle it? And that's what I would say, is that I would handle it by asking you guys for the policy direction. But certainly, you guys tackle issues all the time, uh, we're, and maybe they're new issues. We're specifically here, I think, talking about personnel issues and very operational issues, but there's many, many things that I know, uh, you're coming with the needed policy discussion, uh, right up front, so I'm very okay with that.
Okay. And that's, that's how I'm trying to handle it, is if I go to you with a policy change that I hear from EMS, so that you, um, know, which you probably do, because you're hearing from them, I want you to know what I hear. Because what they, what, at this moment today, what they want me to do is to call for a vote from the county council and, and tell you that, um, this is the end of the dynamic system, that that's out, and we go to a station-based system. I'm not, I don't know if that's the best policy, so I'm not suggesting that we make that policy change. I want to hear from Kevin, and I want to hear from Mr. Judd, and then I want the council to have that information, so that they can give you direction, not, not give you that direction now, but that's the level of frustration.
And I, and I think that's very, uh, I, you're, you're looking out for the interest of the people that you're hearing from, and I think that's fine.
Looking at the interests of the-
But I will say that we're hearing that, and, and we have probably talked about dynamic deployment once a year, uh, for the last four, five years, uh, and it will come up again, uh, and especially if you, uh, if we were to make some model change, uh, we'll be back to discuss how to do it and, uh, the cost of doing it, so.
Yes. And I, and I thought we had made tremendous progress in the, in the last council, when we approved, um, six workstations, and that would take us more to that hybrid system that I think is a compromise that everybody would end up agreeing with. So, um, you know, there's two, two of the six are there. Mr. Judd just says we're looking at locations. I've, I've asked about it, I asked about it frequently, and, and that's the answer I always get. We're looking at locations, we're looking at container units, mobile units, on-base units. I'm good with that. Let's find the best place to do it. But it's been two years, and I would like to see that happen.
I just would caution that even if you had the other two units, I think the, because there's three out there now, you've got, you know, we never defined whether they'd be container units, or we also set offices.
Right.
And one of them is right across the street, so you have that, but he, uh, we have other places, too. They post out of, uh, they post out of the hospital at times, uh, because, again, it is dynamic, they're, they are moved based on need and what's going on in the community. It's a flexible system, so, uh, but the other part that's not being, I think, addressed is just the sheer number of it. No one has ever waited 12 hours in a street corner. That just doesn't happen, because they go down a call, they, in 12 hours, they're on eight calls on average. Our typical fire station around the county is more like six calls in 24 hours. So, because remember, these guys are covering not only the county, they're, they're also covering the cities. So, their call volume is much greater, and they're, so, they don't have, uh, a lot of time, and that's probably a bigger issue. And some of the things we've, I've asked them to look at is, how do we rotate people in and out of busy areas to maybe a little less busy, so that they can get some, uh, some time to breathe and do their paperwork, do other things that they have to do, because they are, you know, they're running the wheels off those ambulances.
Okay. Danny Robbins.
Sheriff, if you have nothing else, I'd just rather call for the vote.
No, I have, I have one other item. Call for a vote on what?
The motion, the second that's on the floor.
We already voted.
Oh, we didn't? Okay. I didn't catch it with, with all the stuff going on. Thanks.
One other thing, lifeguards, it's, we talk about, talk about social media. I've read reports where, you know, I'm accused of accusing our lifeguards of not doing a good job. That just never happens. I, I would never say that, because I know that it's not true, but I, I do have a, a couple of questions. George, if you could answer them, or whoever. Who, who gives approval? Who makes the final decision? I, I guess you do. Who brings you the recommendation for the positions that will be filled?
Well, they, they worked their way up, as far as what's filled.
What positions that we can fund for, to fill?
Well, that, you, well, you guys say how many we have, and then, uh, now, you got the normal year, we'll start there, because I know where this is going to go. Remember what happened in the middle of the budget year, days before the biggest holiday, we, we had to change our model. So, it's a little bit different. But normally, you guys, during the budget, you're okay in how many positions, and you're, they're, at that point, if the position's budgeted, uh, and they're not asking for any change in the position, uh, or anything unique about it, then they can go ahead and fill that position, request, it's all, it's automated. It goes through an automated system, and, uh, usually Suzanne or somebody else signs off, or I do, but it's a, it's an automatic thing. But this particular year, we're going to get into that, we're really still in the middle of redesigning that model. So, that's where we're at. There's nothing really final, uh, and even what we have in the budget submission, I may have to come back to you, just like I said earlier on the other, and, and ask for some changes as we work this thing out, because, you know, their model has now changed, and we do know that they're, you know, the sheriff has, has put quite a few, uh, people down there to do law enforcement, and so that was, you know, that's the part to work out, was, you know, if you just start with one-third of what they did, I, I don't know if that's true or not. We're trying to sift through data to figure some of that out, but reality of it is, like, for instance, night patrol, uh, I think was around six people over multiple shifts. Well, that clearly is the sheriff now, uh, there'd be no reason to have the lifeguards out there in the middle of the night. So, um, those positions would be, would go away, at least for now. Now, if there's other things that we need, uh, and that's what I've asked them to do, is kind of look at their operation and, uh, do some more analysis of some of the things that they'd like to do. I have yet to see a full, uh, report on that. I think they're still working on it, as they should. Some of this, while they, they're in the middle of their busiest season, trying to work their way through, uh, a, a pretty big model change. So, that's what, uh, the decision there. Now, you guys have funded, uh, a tremendous amount of, uh, of the part-time lifeguards, and we have never been, we haven't been able to fill those, uh, because, again, the lack of candidates. And there, you also have a physical requirement, so, uh, not, even, you know, several years ago, we couldn't fill them, because unfortunately, less and less kids, uh, are able to pass the requirement, um, without training, uh, for it, because it's a highly athletic job.
Right. I, I understand that, and I, I completely agree with you that this has been, it's been a tough year for the lifeguards. It's a year of change with what just happened with the state mandate. You didn't ask for it, I didn't ask for it, um, the director of beach safety didn't ask for it, but, but here it is, and so we have to rebuild, and, and I, I understand that. And I guess you, you got to the answer that I was unsure of, um, and it was really not so much who, who recommends what positions are filled, but there's positions that were created that have now been taken away. You just said it's because they're not needed anymore, the nighttime lifeguards or nighttime law enforcement. But who, who on, on staff makes the recommendations to you for what they need on the beaches for personnel?
Well, it starts with Andy.
Does that come from Andy, or does it come from Swanson, or?
Well, it would be typically, again, using the chain of command, you know, uh, Mr. Swanson has that department. He would work with, uh, usually Suzanne, and, uh, and of course, I'm sure Mr. Swanson, who also, uh, spent several years running the beach himself, has worked with Andy, and, uh, you know, where those numbers are coming from. And it would not be unusual for the division head, uh, and this, again, this is unfortunately my job, but it's what it is, but, uh, most division heads ask for X, and I usually have to give them a little less than X, because it has to be what we can afford and work with as well. So, there's often a give and take. And again, I ask them to justify the position, because it is, uh, the most expensive, uh, and probably important part of what we have is our, is our people. So, you know, when you have a big model change like this, it's always a, it's probably more of a challenge. For other people, it might be, what is their workload? You know, how does that correlate to what you're asking for? I know there's a lot of pressure on all of you to, don't grow government. Well, that, you've given me that direction to not grow government, so we work real hard to, uh, handle, uh, the workload with what we have.
Right. But this is public safety, and I bet that this council would say, um, give us the amount of public safety people that we need, not that, not that somebody's ideal, but that we actually need, and we'll go, we'll make a cut somewhere else to make that. Public safety should be our, our first priority. One other question, we had lifeguard stations severely damaged in the hurricane, Ponson Inlet's still not open, Port Orange is still not open. How, why, why is that? How can that be?
Well, because Port Orange's was washed away and collapsed, so that doesn't exist. Uh, the tower can be reused shortly, uh, but all of that had to go before FEMA, which we explained, uh, in the, before the wind died down, uh, from the last storms, and it's going to be a long process, uh, it always is. Matter of fact, I think on the last meeting, if not this one, it was on the consent, uh, I think it was maybe on this meeting, you just agreed to the FEMA, uh, funding, uh, agreement with them, so, uh, it takes literally months for them to come in and inspect and approve, uh, repairs and things along the ocean, uh, as, I think all of our citizens that live along there know, very difficult to permit, and, uh, especially for FEMA, if you make any kind of change, and, you know, in some cases, uh, we're going to have to make changes, because, you know, the, uh, the seawalls have collapsed, and, and, uh, the dune is now different size than what it was, so they fall under different categories with FEMA. But basically, it's, it surrounds, uh, making sure we have FEMA approval, we have it engineered, and then, uh, as soon as we can, we'll have contractors, uh, rebuilding, uh, what they can build. And, and I think to make it just a little bit more fun, I think there's a turtle nest at the base of, uh, the one in Ponson Inlet. So, we have to wait 45 days, is my understanding, before we can work on that.
We can't move the turtle nest? It's public, it's public safety. Does FEMA not make any allowances for public safety?
That's not a FEMA problem.
I mean, I'm going back to everything else you just said about waiting on, on FEMA for inspections. They don't give you any allowance for something as critical as-
Things can go back exactly as they were. We could go faster, but in doing that, in some cases, that just is not engineering possible, given, uh, this is the first time we've ever lost that kind of, uh, the amount of material, um, out on the beach, so, uh, but they are, they are high priority for when we get, but, but they, those towers, we have other towers, and we have towers, uh, that are fiberglass towers on metal areas that are truckable. They can be moved around.
Right.
And they could be used. So, uh, that would be a question, uh-
Is there anything this council can do to help you get that done with FEMA?
I'll have to check with my people to find out at this point. I think we just kind of went through the FEMA thing, and now we're at the point where you will see, you know, more activity, so.
Okay. Okay. I've, I know everybody else is frustrated. To me, this is, this is our first responsibility, is public safety. We have the other, uh, person who wanted to speak on public comments, she came in. I'd asked the council if they would have allowed Dana McCool to, uh, speak. Anybody have an issue with that? Three minutes? Pardon? You can speak twice, you said. Dana McCool.
Again, good afternoon. My intent today was to binge-watch Jack Ryan, but was hearing some things concerning to me, and so I came from Deltona over here. I want to make sure as we move forward, I think that everyone knows my stance on development in Volusia County. I think that we've had a lot of development really quick. I think that their impacts from decisions were made years before any of us ever thought about sitting in these seats. And I know that it's difficult accommodating the growth that we have. But sitting and listening to us taking apart and scrutinizing the very well-organized committee that we have handling our forever and handling our conservation is troubling to me when we don't do the same for development that moves in front of us. We don't pick development apart the way that we should. And I'm not saying that we're not doing our due diligence. I'm saying that we're not doing our due diligence. And Deltona, okay, I just got myself done with the development, where it was able to develop with a traffic impact analysis from 2009, okay? Now, I want you to think about the traffic impact on Howland Boulevard from 2009 to 2023, and what that did, and how much this developer walked away with. Almost $10 million out the door. And if we have that kind of scrutiny on the conservation, we should have that on development as well. So I'm asking us, as we move through developing and conserving, and that delicate balance that we do with what's given to us in our stewardship, that we take development apart the way that we do with conservation? That we're looking at building standards? That we're looking at materials that are more environmentally friendly? That we're demanding better of these developers? They're moving in, SB 102, it's going to develop. Only 40% of it's going to be affordable housing. Remember the other 60% that doesn't have to be? So I want us to look at this holistically as we move through with development in Volusia County. Want to make sure that we're good stewards of the land that we still have. Want to make sure that the push for environmentally friendly Florida native is preferential first. And when we do these development agreements, I just want us to make sure that we're using the best first and last data, and perhaps think about legislation in our own bodies that demand that something can't be more than two years old if we're developing. They need to go back to the drawing board, because if our taxpayers are paying 2023 taxes, then developers should be paying 2023 prices. So I want us to think about, as we move forward, protect our conservation, let the people do their job. 76% of people say that they're doing a good job of what we've entrusted them with. And I would ask us to use the same level of scrutiny with land development as we do conservation. Thank you.
And at 2:18, this meeting is adjourned.